Okay. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting. Today's Wednesday, February 5th, first floor conference room. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Greg going to lead us in the pledge. Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the republic.
Indivisible, just.
Justice for all. Okay. First item on the agenda, no action, Ethics Commission, William Will, he has had to resign from the Ethics Commission, 49 Melville Avenue, term 724 to 726. He had to resign due to personal reasons. Like to thank Will for his service over many years, including on the RTM, but on Ethics Commission, this was a passion, is a passion of his, and he's done a really nice job chairing that. Item number four, Ethics Commission, this requires unanimous Board of Selectment approval and RTM approval. Hugh D. Crooks, unaffiliated, 546 North Benson Road, for term of 724 to 726. And he will be replacing Will Diaz, who resigned. Is Hugh on the, oh, there. Hey, Hugh, how are you doing? You want to say a few words and introduce yourself?
Should we put it on?
I'm sorry, so may have a motion. Yeah. Can you hear it? All in favor, yeah, all in favor say aye. I'm sorry, so we're, we're, can you hear us, Hugh?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Hugh Crooks. I am, as you heard, live at 546 North Benson, which means if you stopped at the Barlow Street traffic light, you've stopped in front of my house. If you went to Fairfield University, you'd probably thrown a beer can on my front lawn. But we've lived there since 2003. My, my wife and I moved, moved to Fairfield. We've been married 30 years, have three kids, went, that went to Osborn Hill, Ludlum Middle School, Fairfield Woods Middle School. And just quickly, my, I guess, my background. I grew up in Canada. Went to college in, in the States, in Massachusetts, moved to New York, then Kate and I got married, we moved to South America. And I, I spent most of my life working in emerging markets in a lot of infrastructure, a lot of energy, a lot of things. And, and I've got a, a pretty strong and varied background in compliance type issues. Everything from Foreign Corrupt Practices Act to, to sanctions, to money laundering, to, you know, I think a lot broader than anything that I would face here, but I, but I developed, although I'm not a lawyer, a very, I think, you know, good pragmatic, but very thorough approach to, to things like conflicts of interest and other, other ethical and compliance issues. I, I, I became a US citizen in 2018. And so I would, that was just as my kids were getting at the age where they, you know, of course, were starting to think politically, and I felt it was really time. I'd sort of resisted because I took the, you know, the, the oath of allegiance, which if any of you know it, is, is actually a little more, a little stronger than the Pledge of Allegiance that's required of anybody who becomes a citizen. And I found all that pretty, like, a pretty moving experience. So I'm still at kind of a stage in my political life where I'm, you know, hoping I'm going to get called to jury duty or, or things like, like that. And, you know, and, and so I, and I've reached a stage in my career where I have a little bit more time. And, and so I think it was, I can't remember, it was quite a while ago that I saw an email from, from Brenda that, that said, hey, we've got some openings on town committees, and I took a look through, and this was one that, that seemed like it would be a, a nice fit and, and in terms of the time requirements as well. And so I, I threw something in. It was quite a while ago. I got an email back saying that the position had been filled, so that that was, that was fine. And then, and then a couple of days ago, got a note from Jennifer that, that this was open. So it's, I think it's, it's, it's something I have some background capacity in, and, and I am truly an unaffiliated, getting back to this, being a new citizen, I sort of prized my vote and my independence, and I, you know, have not voted a party line. I don't ever expect that I, that I would. I, I sort of try to take a fair-minded view to, and, and, and generally, I, I, you know, I feel that our town is well-run with, you know, there's always something. When we moved here, it was Fairfield Metro, and since then, we've had pavilions and fill piles, and you know, there's, there's, of course, problems that come up, but I've always been, you know, grateful for the people who have volunteered their, their time, the people who've been elected and done. I think we've got a pretty good town, and I think it's, it's really, really important. We're seeing this at a national level. It's really important to maintain trust in institutions and trust in government, and that's, I think that the Ethics Commission can certainly be a, a part of that. We, we need the, the, the people in Fairfield that have, you know, real confidence in, in, you know, the people working on their behalf for both parties. So if, you know, if, if you appoint me the committee, I'd be, I'd be thrilled to do it. If, if you don't, there'd be no hard feelings either. I still would be, would be nice if I signed you on the street.
Hugh, I've never thrown a beer can on your yard. And I pass your house, but, um, no, thank you so much for, for agreeing to do this. Thanks for making yourself available. I know you're a person of great integrity. You're going to do a great job, and your background is well-suited to this as well. But also, your temperament is well-suited, and your outlook is well-suited. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Agreed. Surprised with your background and just your outlook on public service. So I thank you for the answer. We're supporting you tonight, and welcome to, you know, Fairfield Town Government in a couple minutes, hopefully.
Thank you.
I would also echo those comments. Thank you, Hugh, for stepping up. I'm glad there was a spot available for you to be able to, be able to volunteer your time to the town, and the citizens do really appreciate it when our, when our average, everyday citizens step up to, to give back to the community that they love so much. So thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
And also just want to echo your thanks to, to Will for his service on this commission and the RTM, and hopefully down the line, if his, you know, family life gets a little less complicated, he also will be back serving our community that I know he loves.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, I mean, Hugh, thank you so much, and congratulations, and you're going to be busy, I'm sure.
I hope not too busy.
So next item, 4B, Historic District Commission Alternate. This requires RTM approval. Greg A. Valenti, Democrat, 762 Hillside Road, term 11/2024 to 11/2029. And this is to replace Jim Akamondo, unaffiliated, who moved to, to fill the full-time member spot, may have a motion. Greg, you on a?
Sure. Take a few minutes here. First of all, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity of the public that's here. So I moved to, I live in Greenfield Hill, and I've had the passion of being part of Fairfield for the past few years, moving here from Westport. Wanted to have the opportunity, Greenfield Hill, an opportunity came to buy a home here, and so I wanted to move to the town of Fairfield. Grew up in Connecticut, in the New England area, Manchester, Connecticut, went to University of Connecticut, did my MBA at Sacred Heart, moved into the area, have a family. The kids are all out and about with their own lives and whatnot. And frankly, at the point in my career, gives me the opportunity to help out, be part of the town, have an active role instead of a voice. And it gives me, you know, some of the passion. First of all, you know, just, I'm a Grange member. I immediately joined the Grange, Greenfield Hill. Not a lot of people know about the Grange. I took an active role of understanding preservation. Thank you, Brenda. I took an active role of the preservation of the Grange, as far as where it stands in the town, being a building that could be part of the historic. And then Preservation Connecticut, looking at the Connecticut legislation and, and whatnot. So I'm very involved in politics, understanding it very well. And I have a passion for the community. Fairfield has a foundation of historic and colonial history, and it means something to everyone. It means something for us, and it means that we should take an active purpose, if you will, towards that, and leave it for our kids one day, and have them see that foundation and not have that change, and really maintain it. So that's really the purpose of me being part of this role. I'm very active in a lot of the town communities. I'm also part of the Naval, Port Five Naval Veterans. I'm the treasurer for it, and, and I'm a very active Sigma Chi. I set up the Sigma Chi here, the chapter of fraternity here at Sacred Heart. I'm a board member of Sigma Chi for the, you know, being part of the college, but being part of helping a lot of the colleges in the area. So, yeah, it means a lot to me to, to do this. I have a passion for it, and so I look forward to, you know, helping out with the commission, being an alternate, and then eventually, hopefully, becoming a, a full commissioner. One day. That's pretty much it. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for stepping up in Greenfield Hill. You know, most people think of the Historic District, you know, as being right here, but Greenfield Hill has one southward, and, and it's good to have representation from other different parts of town. And when you get a chance, if you haven't already, stop by the Greenfield Hill Cemetery that's been restored. It's amazing. I believe it's the most revolutionary war graves in Connecticut in one place. So, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Comments?
We are neighbors and a beautiful, beautiful area of town and many historic sites, just by walking around in terms of housing, cemeteries, churches, old stone walls. So thank you for volunteering and all the service that you, the many ways that you are serving our community.
And I would like to say thank you for stepping up to do this, and, and your work on the Grange as well. I think you're going to be a really valuable voice to this commission. So thanks so much for stepping up.
Thank you, thank you. Any comments from the public? None, back to the board. All in favor say aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
Excuse me, Bill, do you want to just remind people who are here for appointments that they, they're not required to stay for the whole meeting?
Oh, yeah, so you're not required to stay for the whole. Greg, why don't you?
You're welcome to, if you'd like to.
Thank you for watching on TV.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thanks, Brenda. Item 4C, Human Services Commission, Sandra D. Berman, Democrat, 31 Hamilton Court, term 11/2024 to 11/2028. And she will be replacing Barbara M. Paris, Democrat, whose term expired, may have a motion. Sandra, I see you.
Yeah.
You go by Sandy.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're good.
Oh, hi, I'm Sandra Dressler Berman, and I am very much interested in being a part of the Human Services Commission. I am a retired social worker. I've spent my whole career helping people and, and beginning programs, and most of my career was spent in the Westport school system. As a social worker, I also worked for the Department of Human Services in Westport for a number of years, and initiated a number of initiatives there. I am, I am a senior citizen, as you can see, and so I have a vested interest in programs for seniors in Fairfield and what we can do to help make their lives as productive and, and good as possible. I, I'm a trained mediator. I enjoy working on committees and with people. In my retirement, I've done volunteer work with a refugee group, our woven community out of the Boroughs Community Center in Bridgeport. I run a group for, for women out of the Westport Senior Center, actually. I, and, you know, I just feel my skills match the need for somebody to be appointed to this commission, and I would be delighted to, to participate. I, I live with, I've lived in Fairfield 14 years. Right now, I'm talking to you from a hotel room in Delray Beach, Florida, because we're here for the week, but most of the time I live in Greenfield Hunt in, in Fairfield, and we have, one of our sons and his family lives in Fairfield as well. So we love this town, and I'm very happy to participate in any way I can.
Thank you, thank you so much, Sandra. Actually, I, I could not tell that you were a senior citizen, so, but, so. But your, your, your background is, is actually perfect for this board. I think you're going to make a huge contribution. So thank you for stepping up to do it. Any other comments?
Agreed. I love just advocating for seniors, for work your work with those with disabilities, being in the schools, working with our youth, all of those constituents. This mission will be focusing on their needs. So thank you for volunteering and enjoy the warm weather down there. You're missing the ice that's coming tomorrow.
I hear that, yeah.
I would also thank you, Sandy, for stepping up to serve on this commission. It is an important commission. They do a lot of good work, and I'm sure, I'm sure you'll be a valuable voice, and thanks again.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor say aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Sandra. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number five. This is a first selectmen appointment, appointment that requires RTM approval. Employees Retirement Board, Joseph Quinn Jr., unaffiliated, 904 Reef Road, term 11/2021 to 11/2026. And he is replacing Jim Brown, Republican, who resigned. Jim Brown is, you've got big shoes to fill, Joe, but I know your, your resume is, is fantastic. Jim Brown is a fantastic person. It's been a unbelievable public service for decades in, in town. And, and we really appreciate all that he's done for the town. But Joe, your background's perfect, and I know you've met with Ken Brackfeld, and he's become highly recommended. Do you mind saying a? Yeah.
Sure.
Did I? Did we make a motion to discuss? Oh, may, may I have a motion?
This is an appointment by you.
Oh, it's my appointment. So you're gonna, this is for the RTM. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Just really quickly, my name's Joe Quinn. I grew up in Trumbull, graduated from Fairfield U about 15 years ago, and have spent my career, entirety of my career in investment and operational due diligence on alternative investments, which is, you know, I've never kind of given back or worked with local government, but I think one of your first selectmen emails mentioned this opening and really spoke directly to my experience. So I reached out, really enjoyed getting to know Ken, and I've spoken to some other members of the board, and looking forward to helping out where I can there. So.
Yeah, thank you. And, and this, this board is, is a really good board. It's totally non-political. They did a survey about what they thought, you know, their gaps are and what they should look for, and they're really excited to have you come on this board with your background, and I'm sure with your alternatives experience, be very helpful as well. So thank you for stepping up.
Same to be here.
Any other comments?
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
So this is not a voting item. But you'll be going to the RTM. Item six, Police Chief, requires Board of Finance and RTM approval to hear, consider, and act on approving a grant agreement between the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office in the town of Fairfield, for the Fairfield Police Department's distracted driving high-visibility enforcement program, and to further approve and accept of the grant funds and their appropriation for the purposes set forth in the grant agreement. Chief?
Hello?
May I have a motion?
Okay.
So this grant, as stated, is a $49,920. The wave, or the enforcement wave goes from April 1st, 2025 to April 30th, so it's the entire month of April. And we have a deployment schedule for officers to go out, do high-visibility enforcement for distracted driving over that period.
This has been done in the past.
It has, yes.
Every year?
We do it twice per year, as long as the grant is awarded to us, and it passes all the boards.
Right. Any questions? Seeing none, any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor say aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number seven. Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments, this requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. Whereas the town of Fairfield and the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments have been awarded a grant in the total amount of $5,000 from the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Active Transportation Micro Grant Program for Fairfield's Safer Streets Program. And whereas the grant money will be used for a public awareness campaign sponsored by the Fairfield Safe Streets Alliance to increase awareness of dangerous driving and encourage behavior change by all roadway users. Now therefore be resolved that the first selectmen be, and hereby is authorized to accept said grant, expend said grant funds in accordance with the terms of the grant, and execute any and all required documents to effectually said grant. May I have a motion? So I, I think both of you can get up and you're going to start. Nick, why don't you go first? Yeah.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nick Dostal. I'm a regional planner from the Connecticut Metropolitan Council of Governments. The Council of Governments administrate this grant on behalf of the Connecticut Department of Transportation. What this grant is, is the Active Transportation Micro Grant, which funds up to $5,000 at a time of non-infrastructural bike and pedestrian safety, materials, education events, you name it. Eligible under this award are educational events for traffic safety. You're able to purchase bicycles, bicycle helmets, bicycle repair kits, traffic safety vests. Now, this year, which is the second year of the grant, you're able to purchase bicycle racks and physical bicycle repair kits. So there's up to $750,000 available this year. And from the past year, the town of Fairfield has applied for, and was approved for a $5,000 grant for educational materials as part of their Safer Streets initiative. So the municipality, the Board of Education, and any nonprofit organizations within the town are all eligible to apply, and they do not compete against each other in any way, so they're able to apply separately. So there's plenty of money out there, plenty of opportunities to get funding to make your streets safer. Thanks for answering any questions.
And, and Nick, Nick works in Bridgeport for the Metro, our regional council of governments called Metrika. You've worked on many of our projects. Lisa, do you want to add some color to that?
Absolutely do that. Thank you, Nick. I am Lisa Claire, Communications Director for the town of Fairfield, and we have put together in response to traffic safety issues that we have had surfaced by email and, and residents, a Fairfield Safe Streets Alliance. And what that is, is an internal group of people that includes members from police, fire, schools, health, library, and the Bike Ped Committee. We interact and are guided by and share information with the local traffic authority, the Engineering Department, Department of Public Works Bike Ped Committee, and our Vision Zero signatories. And the reason that we are together as an alliance is a goal of enhancing road safety for all of our residents and road users. So that includes drivers, bikes, and pedestrians by creating a greater awareness of personal behavior through education. So our public outreach campaign is in concert with the Vision Zero pledge, which asks residents to slow down while driving, be alert to people walking and bicycling, and respect that people walking have the right of way. We are intent on sharing information with the public through a multi-platform campaign. So we're going to, in the next couple of months, have a kickoff press conference. We will follow that up with more news engagement, smaller neighborhood-style meetings. We'll ask people to sign a pledge, and when they sign that pledge, we'll have some sort of material that is a social engagement, community engagement thing that will show their peers and their neighbors that they are responsible for their own driving, walking, biking. So we talk about the three Es. We talk about education. We talk about enforcement. We talk about engineering. And what we want to do is add an R to that, and that's responsibility, that we will have safer, slower, friendlier streets when we all begin to take responsibility for our own actions on the road. The grant will be used for both printed materials as well as the things like, one of the things that we talked about with Nick was doing actual magnets that fit on the back of a car that will show that people are pledge supporters and supporters of the campaign from the Safe Streets Alliance. We're looking at a 12-month in duration campaign. We are doing a survey to kick it off, so that we have measured attitudes and behavior, and we'll do a survey to follow up, which also will measure our success in changing how people feel about our roadways. Are there any questions?
I'm really excited about this campaign. I, I actually walked into your meeting today and saw a subcommittee meeting, and I'm thrilled at the engagement of department heads that are coming from around town, and how excited they are about this, and how creative they're, they're being, and thank you for leading this effort. So this is the education component of the three Es, but we're working on engineering. Bill Hurley is in the room. He's very, very involved in the engineering. Meg, Megajane, very, very involved in the engineering component of this, enforcement component of this. The police have been enforcing, working very hard to, to, to increase enforcement. And, but they are also asking for the RTM to approve the automated traffic safety devices in school zones, starting, you know, the next RTM meeting. If that gets approved, those will be going in, into six school zones. So we're trying to approach this from all of the three Es, and, and, and hopefully we'll get people to change their, their attitudes towards speeding and awareness and distracted, distracted driving. It's like that. So thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Brenda? We can't hear you. Oh, you're on mute?
Thank you. I, I was trying, I muted myself, and then I couldn't unmute, so.
Could you hear, could you hear us?
Yes, I could. I just, for some reason, wasn't able to unmute myself.
Okay.
I, I think it's a great program. Look forward to seeing if it's helpful.
All right, terrific. Thank you. Christine? Thank you. Just, oh, sorry. This is great and exciting. The work is being done. I am intrigued by the opportunity for other town organizations to apply for additional grants. There's been a lot of talk in town, you know, electronic scooters and just our youth. Some of their behavior on the streets is not particularly safe. With something, if the Board of Education or PTA Council apply for a grant, could there be a program in the school for education focused on something like e-bikes or distributing vests? Just want to know about please that we can access more money and get more training out there. And I don't know what the window is for applying for these grants, so if you could just talk a little bit more maybe about that, just for other org, I know that there is, I'm sure that you probably talked about this, Lisa, but just to get it on the public record. Okay. Also.
So, yeah, absolutely. There's plenty of opportunity. So the town of Fairfield itself, as soon as they receive the grant funds and expend them, they're eligible to apply again. Each entity is able to apply twice per calendar year on the condition that they've expended the previous awards funds. Like I mentioned before, Boards of Education are eligible to apply, town is eligible to apply, and all sorts of 501(c)(3) nonprofits are eligible. And all sorts of five oh, five oh one C three nonprofits are eligible. They can all apply separately. The funding is not necessarily competitive. It's just as long as it fits into the remaining fund balance. And all of the activities that are applied for are eligible, then for the most part, they go through. In terms of deadlines, the next deadline to apply for funding under the Active Transportation Micro Grant. Is in late March. The next one after that will be late June. The third round of this year will be late September. And then the final and fourth round will be in mid-December. And if you have any questions on if the activities you're applying for are eligible. If the entity itself is eligible, or if you just have general questions, feel free to reach out to me through email or call me. It's N D O S T A L at C T metro dot org.
So Nick, so an entity can reapply after they've expended the money, but do you know if a Board of Ed can? I mean, it's technically the same, you know, tax ID, but could they, can, can the Board of Ed apply now before we spend the money? Or would they have to wait until this grant has been spent?
I believe so. The way they've worded it in the grant guidelines. You should be able to. I'll triple check with the Department of Transportation, but they should be able to, yeah.
So our bike ped committee might be able to apply separately as well.
If they are nonprofit.
Yeah, okay, no, they're a committee. Okay, well.
Something like PTA Council.
You get council.
They wanted to do, and I know at the word of that, we have safe streets for our kindergartners about learning about bike safety and walking to school. So I think that it would be just, it's good information to have for some of our other organizations in town that are concerned, especially about our children. Downtown and get to school.
So yeah, Christine, all the activities which you mentioned earlier are great, fully eligible, and we'd love to have you guys apply for them.
And I know that there's a lot of people out there just really focusing on getting, just getting all the schools involved and, you know, the supporters. To our schools. So thank you. Thank you for, for your work on this, Claire, and excited for, for the next steps.
Okay, we'll keep you up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I think Christine, you bring up a good point about the, these scooters or these electric scooters. So you know, we, we didn't. Continue with the bird scooters, which actually have requirements. You know, that you had to be a certain age, you had to have a driver's license, you know, all of these things. And so we got rid of something that had safety, you know, mechanisms. And parents are buying these things for kids. I mean, I, I mean, I almost, I saw a kid almost get killed on one recently. A young kid. And, you know, so I, I mean, I don't know what we do about that. I know. We dealt with a lot of complaints about the bird, but half the time those complaints didn't. They weren't regarding those birds. They were regarding personal, private scooters that parents were buying for their kids. So I don't know how we, you know, get the message out in some way, shape or fashion, because honestly, a twelve year old kid is, is on the electric scooter. Is an accident waiting to happen. Regardless of how much training they get, they're just so young. And I don't know, it's something I think worth looking into. It is, it, to me, it's very, it's very worrisome.
It is, and I know that there's been conversations at the town level, and I know that you've spoken to the chief of police, and many people have been reaching out about this and. I've spoken to Board of Ed members and we spoke to superintendent about whether or not programming can be brought into the middle schools, because as you said, so many. I mean, right there with you, driving around town and seeing twelve, thirteen year olds. Unlike when kids learn to ride the bike when they're five and six, I think they were missing this piece about education and just road safety. So I thank the town for their, their efforts on this and if there's more funding available for other organizations. Just to share that information. So thank you for coming and presenting today.
Yeah, and some of, some of the education is for the parents, because I mean, with the bird scooters. For some reason, parents felt okay getting around safeguards and a lot of the kids riding them were actually underage. You knew somehow their parents would, would rent them for the kid and the kid would, would use them. So we need to educate the parents about safe biking as well. And hopefully do that through the schools as well.
Yeah, just having a maybe after school or evening program that parents bring their children to and. You know, brainstorming here, but I think it's just knowing that some of these things do cost money that are not budgeted for, so it's wonderful to know these grants are available.
So some of these electric bikes, if you remove some safeguards, which I guess people do, can go up to fifty miles per hour. And it's really concerning, I think. Those should probably not be available for people underage and because apparently it's pretty easy to take those safeguards off, but. I don't know how much you know about it, Nick, but. There possibly could be some legislation that might be able to help with that.
Yeah, so at the state level, there's some talks about legislation regarding e-bikes because they're relatively new. They've exploded onto the scene since pandemic and there's a lot of worries. Those easy to bypass safeguards and the electric battery, which in New York City especially, there's been multiple high profile cases of batteries exploding, causing fires. So that's another thing to watch out for. While legislation's ongoing at the state level, potentially even looking into what you could do at the municipal, municipal level. And that's something that we can do some research at, at the regional level and provide you guys with some information on.
Yeah, I've talked to our state reps about legislation and we should definitely pursue that because you need a license to. Drive a motorcycle, but some of these electric bikes, when you remove those safeguards, they're traveling well above the speed limit, so yeah. Okay. Any comments from the public? None, back to the board, all in favor say aye. Thank you, Lisa. Thanks for coming, Nick. Item number eight, Community and Economic Development Director, our hard hardest here. This requires RTM approval and referral to TPZ pursuant to CGS section eight dash twenty four. To here consider and act upon the following resolution is recommended by the Director of Community and Economic Development. Resolve that the town of Fairfield, by its first selectman Willie May Gerber. Is authorized to enter into a ground lease for seventy five years with Habitat for Humanity. To build four units of affordable homeownership, housing at three eighty five Quincy Street and four oh nine Quincy Street with no cost to the town. And further resolve that First Selectman Willie May Gerber is authorized to execute all documents in connection thereto made a motion. Well, as the resolution states, we're asking for your permission to enter into a ground lease with Habitat for Humanity. We purchased these two properties back in two thousand twenty one, I believe. We since entered into, we purchased three additional properties within the Parkview Commons Development, also known as the Navy Housing Site. We've been engaged since Superstorm Sandy in an effort to reacquire properties within that development. To demo the existing units and construct new units at the proper flood elevation. Both to preserve affordable homeownership opportunities in the future, but also look for opportunities to expand our affordable housing inventory. So this would do that. These are the first two lots, both are. In the Residence B Zone, they're of nine thousand square feet or more, so they're duplex building lots. We would eventually to seek coastal area management application, site plan application with the Planning and Zoning Commission. To demonstrate how we're complying with FEMA flight compliance efforts. But at this point, you know, we've entered into a development agreement with Habitat to develop these parcels, five and, and all. These are the two that are not contiguous to one another across the street. I'd like to start with them with conventional duplex, duplexes for both, both lots. It will remain deed restricted affordable in perpetuity. I know it's a seventy five year ground lease, but there's provisions to reassign those to subsequent owners. And the fact that we're working with Habitat also provides great, an opportunity to greatly target more affordable. Components, including two of the units being at or below sixty percent E I, which is almost unheard of for affordable homeownership because. Habitat is part of their model, not only provides the sweat equity component, but also will provide a mortgage financing at. Zero percent financing over thirty years, which you cannot beat. So that really provides an opportunity for us to provide deeply targeted affordable homeownership opportunities, which otherwise wouldn't exist here in town. Happy to take any questions you have. So this, you're converting two units into. Older. Is it older slab on grade construction, very modest three bedroom units who were built. By the US government to house military personnel and their family. They were sold when the town purchased the property, they were sold with resale restrictions in place. As affordable homeownership opportunities, things went well until we had Superstorm Sandy. You know, and then it became evident that really we couldn't comply with the ongoing flood compliance issues without. Raising the structures and elevating them, and that's a practical impossibility with resale restrictions in place. So, so as a result, we've been engaged since the inception of the Housing Trust Fund. As, as, as properties become available, we've certainly made an effort to, to require them with the thought of redeveloping the property in this way. And, and the homeowners, because it's deed restricted, they do get some formula that allows them some equity, increase, increase in equity. Yeah, there's a provision in amended covenants and restrictions that I included in your packet. That does provide for a formula upon resale. Take into account cost of living adjustments as well as any improvements the homeowner has paid for. That have been, you know, permitted, that have been approved with proper building permits and the like. So there is some upside potential. Of course, it's limited because at the end of the day, we want to keep these affordable. So they'll need to be able to sell those to other income eligible home buyers. Any questions from the board?
I just want to reiterate my gratitude for Mark's hard work on this. He's been working on, as he said, since, for a long time. Very long time. And, you know, spending time with Mark, going over this when I was in office, the, the amount of effort. It is like a Chinese puzzle. I mean, all these different pieces and calls and letters and just so much work. To, to get those properties and I think it's going to be such a home run for our community and. So grateful that we're going to be partnering again with Habitat. It's just, it's just such a great thing. And Mark, you've done such an amazing job. Just thanks so much.
Thank you. And I will say that if you haven't taken a look at two forty four Greenfield Street, the duplex is being built there. They're coming along very nicely. They should be ready for occupancy this spring. Look great. And we're looking to expand that opportunity next door, as you know, approve the purchase of two fifty four Greenfield Street. We're looking to do the same thing there. So thank you for your support.
I drive by it a lot. They look amazing. Such an improvement. So great.
Yeah, I just, I just want to highlight how unique this opportunity is, or the homeownership. For affordable housing is really tough to achieve. Most of the affordable housing is rental. And it's, you know, a percentage of the market rate. And to be able to pull off something that's sixty percent as opposed to eighty percent of the average median income is remarkable. And I, I suppose part of that formula has to be habitat.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so thank, yeah, I mean, it's a great partnership. Yeah, thank you. Any comments from the public? None, back to the board, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mark. Oh wait, or no, next is Emily. Okay. Planning and zoning assistant director to hear a FEMA CRS. Do you, you don't want to talk about FEMA CRN? To hear a FEMA CRS progress report on action items outlined in the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thanks so much. As you know, the town of Fairfield participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, which allows. Any of our residents to purchase flood insurance through that program. They have an additional program called the Community Rating System where if you enact best practices for flood plain management. You're able to achieve a rank that gives you a discount for your homeowners on their premium for their flood insurance policy. And Fairfield is presently a class eight, and so our homeowners receive a ten percent discount. We have about one thousand five hundred sixty four policy holders who receive about two hundred and four, about two hundred five thousand. Dollars annually in premium savings. One of the tasks that's required is this annual review in addition to things like. Mailing our local Realtors, insurance and insurance agents and mortgage lenders to help them understand the flood insurance program. Providing flood information to our constituents, both over the phone via email during our public counter hours. As well as additional safety features, such as the one foot freeboard requirement that's within our zoning regulations. That requires that projects are built to a higher standard than the minimum standard. Every year we come before you with our flood plain management plan. This year because. All of the action items that are within this plan are derived from our natural hazard mitigation plan. This was most recently adopted by, by this board in August, just this past August. We don't have a lot of change that's within the project review for this year. We did send it out to departments and agencies. Bill, as, as our engineering manager takes a really careful look at it. In terms of where the projects are, status of projects. And so in this update, we do send it also to the, I have to remember what this is. Flood Prevention, Climate Resilience and Erosion Control Board, our FERB. And so they also collaborate on the update to the report. Since August, I will say that our projects have been moving along. And the updates include that the Riverside Drive Bridge and Turney Creek Tide Gate System is anticipated to finish construction in summer twenty twenty five. The RFP for the Fairfield Townwide Resilience Plan was awarded. Although permits are still pending for Villa Avenue and the Fairchild Wheeler Detention Projects and the Rooster River Corridor. Construction is anticipated to start in the spring for, for both of those projects. We also have the East trunk, East trunk line sanitary sewer project that's starting in twenty twenty five. Perry's Green Bulkhead Repair is almost complete. And also the Conservation Department has been actively acquiring title marshland properties to ensure that these are protected from future development in perpetuity. So we have been making progress with the action items within this plan. And Bill has graciously attending today to help with any questions that you may have for any of the engineering related projects. But I'm also here to answer any questions if you have them.
I, on the projects, I, I talk about these a lot with Bill, so probably let other people ask questions. But I, I am curious, I can't recall what it, what it takes to go from an eight rating to a nine rating. Is that insurmountable or?
You're actually going in the other direction. So the highest class where you get the most discount is actually a class one. And there's only, I think, about four communities in the country that are a class one. And some of the thresholds in order to get at a lower class with a higher flood insurance premium discount has to do with certain. Certain classifications of your building department. So we probably can't jump below a seven. We might be able to achieve a seven, but you know, it's, it's, we would have to look at what the, what the points are, what the strategies are in terms of. The amount of time that's dedicated to do that. I think a lot of the higher class communities. Are actually sometimes county government where they have actual staff people really dedicated to do this work. And in Connecticut, I think there are two class seven communities, but that, that building, that building department classification. Really kind of holds back our communities from getting, in Connecticut, from getting a, a higher rating.
You're, we're only really talking about coastal communities, right? Because if you're a riverine, purely riverine community, and probably would it be easier to, well, I don't know, you've got to.
You know, I don't, I don't know. I think like one of the class ones is Rosemead, California. And so I, I think it just depends on how you, you know, it's a, it's a. And so I think it just depends on how you, you know, it's a it's a point based system. So they look at, you know, do you prevent development in some of your riverine areas? Because, you know, we're we're a very old community where, you know, we had a lot of development on waterfront areas. You know, we we end up scoring, our our scoring is a little more challenging.
And and then a lower scoring gets you somewhat higher discounts for your policyholders.
Yep, the highest discount you think you can get is forty five percent off of your premium price, so almost fifty percent off. But again, you have to get to that, like a class one or a class two in order to get that.
Right, great. Okay, thank you. Any one other comment I'd like to make is this CRS for the public, I'm not telling you, but for the public's purposes was in jeopardy. We were in jeopardy of losing this had we not remediated the Penfield Pavilion project and taking the beach down from what was deemed built up to eleven feet. It was built up to eleven feet and it was deemed not in accordance with FEMA regulations. So that is now had to come down to elevation eight feet. FEMA actually required us to do that in order to stay in their community rating system, and we had to remediate the foundation, which was very costly in order to stay in the CRS rated system. And and that is pretty much complete at this point. So, yeah. I don't know if we're going to talk about that today, but I don't think so. But Eli Gisels here, so so that is that is complete. But, you know, we we were asked a lot of questions about why are you would you reduce the level of the beach if you're trying to keep the water out? And the answer is basically that FEMA says so, but you have to have your beach at a natural grade. And the theory is that if it's not a natural grade during a storm, it will come and it'll it'll end up getting wiped out anyway and faster. You know, so that's why we had to remove three feet on the beach and probably would have lost a lot more had we not complied, maybe grant grant opportunities. Any any comments?
There's a lot on Rooster River here. Just is there any? I don't want to go too far off the agenda, but some of this stuff has a happening spring. You know, expecting things to move forward. And I know it's been a topic of conversation of this board of just wanting to see see the work continue, but appreciate that we're waiting on other people. So I don't know if anything new to report. If not, that's fine. But just figured, well, I'll be happy to go here.
I mean, that's a big topic. Should we do that today? Or I mean, Bill's here.
Or anything in terms of the timing for this? I'm assuming that we're still good with the timeline.
Every day we get closer. We've just got some positive feedback from the Connecticut DEEP on their environmental monitor. We do not need a special environmental impact statement. So that was good news. And sometimes the finish line moves depending on what grants you get, what funding sources you have. Still waiting the Army Corps of Engineer to give us the final comments. We responded to those comments back in the fall and waiting. And now the latest is mid February is when they get to. So we're that close.
And that's for both detention?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's really number twenty one, the Rooster River Watershed Flood Detention Storage Study completed in two thousand nineteen. Final permit. This whole project is expected in spring two thousand twenty five. So just ask about that, just because spring two thousand twenty five will hopefully be here soon. Thanks for the update. And just in terms of the the cost for this, assuming that other just timelines for what budget cycle this is going to hit some of this stuff and moving this forward. In looking at this kind of next steps of just progress, I want to make sure our funding in terms of being in the operating budget. Things in place, but I guess I'll save those for for when we're in the budget as a follow up.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it really allows some flexibility. Doesn't have to be, you know, that exact, but having it on the list of the hazard mitigation does give us better chance, actually a chance of getting grants. And it also kind of just gives us a sort of record keeping or inventory as some of the projects we were able to remove because they've been completed. So it's a working document.
And then every year, because there's an annual review, if some of those costs decrease or increase, that's a modification that could be made as we review this annually as well.
Thank you so much, Emily. Item number, thanks, Bill. Item number ten, the Capital Projects Group to hear an update on the Roger Lobo Middle School turf field. Eli?
All right. If you pass by the middle school there, the turf field, you'll see that the contractor has finished subgrading and is currently working on installing some of the retaining walls on the perimeter of the site. Over the next month, the contractor will install new cables for light poles and begin layout for turf installation. The contractor is projected to bring the project to completion in the month of May, which is what originally Parks and Rec expected. The main reason why I'm here is one issue that hurt our project budget is the polluted soil export. Once polluted soils were identified, that's when the capital projects team was brought in. It's important to note that the soil on site is not contaminated, but identified as polluted. What's this mean? Means that does not exceed residential standards and it is safe to be on site. However, and don't ask me why, now that we are excavating it and stockpiling it, Connecticut D requires us to handle it properly. Due to the site logistics and the timing, the team decided that the best scenario was to dispose of the soil to a permanent landfill. To keep costs under control, the team decided to use our on-call remediation contractor instead of the awarded contractor to transport and dispose the polluted soils. Our onsite, our on-call contractor, excuse me, had significantly lower unit prices, which resulted in a cost savings of five hundred thousand dollars. In addition, we negotiated with the contractor a credit back on the costs he carried in his bid to transport and dispose the soil, had they been clean. And this resulted in a credit back of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We also have a contingency of two hundred thousand dollars for the project that was unspent. Unfortunately, even with all our efforts, due to the expensive cost of soil remediation and the amount of soil that needed to be cut and disposed, we are projected to exceed our authorization by nine hundred thousand dollars. We will be finalizing these numbers over the next couple of weeks and will be coming in front of the boards to seek additional funding. Overall, as I said, the project is expected to come on schedule in May, despite the challenges that we face using contaminated excuse me, polluted soils. Very complex, happy to answer any questions. We don't take the number lightly. It's nine hundred thousand dollars. I say I'm throwing that out there as if it's not a lot of money. But unfortunately, that was what was hand that we were dealt with this project.
So can I pass conversations with you? I want to make sure that that I have everything right. But I recall you saying that when I think it was Parks and Rec was in charge of the bidding of this.
Right.
And they had studies in on hand from the fill pile studies that were done. And there were none of those contaminants in the soil. So they assumed that we were okay.
The original study that was done during the investigation of the Julian fill, when all fields were sampled and all playgrounds were sampled, this field specifically was sampled and it did not contain contaminated soil. So at that time, you don't need, we didn't need to remediate it. Although the samples back then did show polluted contaminants, organics, PAHs and PAHs and one other component.
But those are things you wouldn't expect to have to remove unless in this circumstance, you're you have to you have to clear it off in order to put the turf in. You have to put it somewhere. And there were few alternatives. One was you could build a berm or something.
Yeah. So in polluted soil, the definition of polluted soil, Connecticut D has three options for everybody that runs into polluted soil. One is to properly dispose of it through a permanent landfill. The second is to keep it on site and you are perfectly, it's legal to keep it on site. And the third option is to is to move it to another site. But in order to do that, you have to obtain a Connecticut deep permit to do that. Very lengthy process, about a year to do lots of approvals. In this specific site, we couldn't keep it on site simply because we the cut fill analysis showed too much soil need to come out in order to install a turf field. Another option.
It would have been massive.
Oh, yeah.
And we don't necessarily want polluted soil, massive amounts of polluted soil.
To keep it on site, we would have had to build some sort of berm, and I hate to use that word. But that's why I didn't even consider it. And and keeping it on site, the second one was the removing it to another site. But the lengthy process of doing that and the permits needed that we need to obtain with Connecticut deep just was not feasible under our timelines. So the best solution was to get rid of it to a lined landfill.
Yeah.
So just in terms of, like, this is already, we've already incurred this expense right now. So what if what if town boards just didn't approve it like?
We didn't incur.
Where would we be with, you know, typically we realize that we're going to go over budget? Was there a hit pause and reevaluate or?
At that time, the soil was moved. So if the boards do not want to approve this money, we have not paid the contractor in full, so the project would just come to a halt. So we didn't over expend, we didn't spend over our authorization, but we will need additional money to cover. Yeah.
And and not moving forward with removing it, it would have there have been a big pile of polluted soil there forever. So it is a tough, tough deal.
And having gone through this project, were there any lessons learned? I mean, I know the Board of Ed had approved another. It hasn't moved forward yet, a capital project for another turf field.
Yeah.
At Ward High School, which I think based on that, I don't remember the number offhand, but.
I think it was like eight million. I think they approved eight million or.
One point five?
They approved one point five, but it was an eight million dollar project.
No, I think that that was initial, just I think it was one point five based on some initial initial numbers that they had received. I don't want to go too far down that, but just in terms of heard for years from various groups that we need more field space, more turf. As the schools move forward, you know, we don't know nine hundred thousand dollars, and it sounds like it could have been more.
Yep.
Depending on how would you approach, if there's a different approach that you would take to a future project based on what you learned from this project?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the capital projects group, you know, we are aware that anytime you put a shovel into the ground in the town of Fairfield, unfortunately, I hate to say it, but you are you anticipate that you're going to hit some sort of polluted soil, some sort of contaminated soil. We're dealing with the same thing over at Riverside Drive, although that project, we anticipated hitting polluted soil. And we built a contingency, same thing with East Trunk Line. That's a future project that's coming up where we have a big chunk of contingency money to be able to handle contaminated and polluted soil. Unfortunately, in this project, once the cap projects team was brought in, that we had not anticipated or carried a line item for polluted soils, which is, you know, the unfortunate part as to why we're here. You know, on any project moving forward in the town of Fairfield, and we need to carry some sort of budget.
For that.
Just for polluted contaminated soils. And if you want to get even better, more granular, before you touch anything, just sample it. And then that way we have an idea before we move anything. Like this, this field could have been completely kept there, no problems. Wouldn't it's not no harm, health, you know, risks or anything like that. Unfortunately, because we touched it, we now have to handle it properly.
I can't recall the total budget for for this project. Do you have that on?
I believe it was four point seven million. Yeah.
And then so the nine
Around there.
Nine hundred thousand on top of that.
That's correct.
Well, we'll be in addition to.
That's correct. Yeah. In addition to the already approved. So we'll finalize those numbers. And we'll get back to the boards over the next month or so for approval.
It's just an exploratory.
Can I ask, Eli, when when did, when were you made, when were you aware that the soil was contaminated?
This was brought to my attention. Yeah, polluted. This was brought to my attention, I want to say around the holiday season. Around December.
So I'm wondering why we weren't like, like we weren't told this. Like, I know when we were doing the water pollution control project and, you know, we hit soil that was contaminated, you know, we immediately had to disclose that, you know, I let the public know about it. You know, that we had it, that it was going to increase cost of that project. So.
Yeah, at the time when we were brought in, we didn't really have a handle as to how much of this soil was going to get taken out, but the total quantity was. So I mean, that's why we came, once we had a comfortable number to present to the boards as to what the total cost increase was going to be.
So what's the difference between polluted and contaminated?
I spent about two hours on the phone with our LP this morning, trying to really under so polluted soil is has organics in it. It is not considered a health hazard. Let me write, let me see what my notes says here. Yeah, the soil does not exceed residential standards and is just safe to remain on site. Contaminated soils exceed residential standards. This does not exceed, but it's considered polluted.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I assume we'll be seeing the request in the next couple of meetings to get this, so we can finish this.
Yep.
Thank you for that update.
You know, while Bill, while we're on the subject of fields, I know we're doing a capital update on the agenda, but I, you know, when we first started, when the athletic groups reached out and really wanted more turf fields, you know, we had made a deal like we would do this field and then we would work with them to, you know, partner and maybe try to even get some, you know, commercial or business donations toward the other fields because the number is so high really for these fields. And even the universities who, you know, who are usually pretty good partners with the town could, you know, help us out with them. But I'm trying to remember. I know it was Ward and I know because we got an email today from someone asking about the Ward. I think they misunderstood and they thought we were voting on the Ward turf field today. And I know they wanted one down at Hayden Field and maybe some others too. Are those going to be in the Capitol? The Capitol presentation on the agenda, like all the field.
Today, I don't think so.
I don't believe Parks and Rec has any turf fields on the Capitol plant. I
Not all for any, like not for the next twenty years?
I don't, I don't think the one, one and a half was removed. Am I right? David?
That was under the Board of Ed.
That was the Board of Ed. Did they, is it still there? Because I mean, there are so many important infrastructure projects. And, you know, this, if it's there or not, like, there would have to be a trade off at this point, because we're going to be hitting up against our debt limits.
Under the board's internal debt.
Yeah.
One point five for Ward is on, it's still on, it's a one point five number. And the Ludlow. That's a little bit more than known. It's on there on its on the same schedule that we had had put forward. So those, those are those plus R O M S, which is ongoing, are the only three that are currently listed.
And we wouldn't anticipate running into these problems for replacement of existing turf field.
Well, we don't anticipate it, but we didn't anticipate it with Ludlow either, right?
No, but we're not.
Fields already has this soil.
Is it a straight replacement? Yes, it's a straight replacement of.
On those fields.
So you could anticipate it at Ward.
For a new field.
For a new field, yes.
And the one and a half, I don't know where that number came from, but it's not a real number. Can't be.
Well, I think that it was not, I think that.
It was a reminder.
Well, I don't want to I think that we, it's not before us. So if we want to hear.
Now, I'm just curious because.
More about that, I think we should just ask the.
No, but you, you raise a good point. I, I don't think, I never, I haven't talked to any, um, one about a public private partnership. I do, I remember seeing something submitted by a group and I don't know if they followed through, but, hey, you know, if, if that's a way to get something done, we should consider it. If you want to send me.
Maybe talk to Anthony, I, I can't remember their official name, the Fairfield Athletic.
Foundation.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of money, um.
Right, they were very, um, you know, enthusiastic about, um, because of the scheduling with the fields and all of that, but.
Yeah.
We had discussed, you know, you know, them raising money through their organization, because there's so many parents involved. Um, and then also reaching out the town, you know, to our two universities, which is a unique situation that we do have. You know, even, you know, putting up signs as saying, you know, Fairfield U is helping sponsor this field, Sacred Heart. Um, you know, even some of the, maybe bigger corporations, Bigelow, you know, things like that. Just to try to, you know, get the fields in place, because obviously it was a big number. Um, but I know that, you know, obviously we have a lot of kids and, you know, we want to support their ability to participate in sports as much as possible, because it's good, clean, healthy fun. Um, and it's good for the, it's good for them. Um, I don't know, I'm just, I just, it just, it spurred this while we started talking about it.
Yeah, if there's an opportunity, I, I'm, I think we should be open to talking to anyone about, you know, private, public participate, you know, um, cooperation, collaboration, but.
Maybe reach out to that group, you know, and sit down.
Yeah, and I can just speak.
Yeah, Dylan was very active and, and that.
And they, I met with them, um, the Finance Committee, the Facilities Committee of the Board of Ed, and part of their funding for their piece of it included a, um, the Fairfield Public Schools, a per, like a per person, um, contribution to fund the, to fund the fields. And the board at that time really was not, we viewed it as somewhat a pay to play and we shouldn't have to charge our public school students to play on their school field. So that was, it kind of stalled with us, the Board of Ed at that time. Um, and then I think that they ended up going, that we were probably meeting with them around the same time that this conversation was happening. Brenda, I think that they were going to meet with you as well and definitely were open to the conversation, but they were looking more to get some more corporate sponsors, if memory serves, just to pick up that private piece.
But, but that's a heavy, heavy lift. I, I have to say off the bat that it would be doubtful that they would be able to, I mean, think about Four Corners project, they raised what? Five, six hundred thousand, took years, I mean, that would be a heavy, heavy lift.
Yeah, and the one point, yeah, and the one point five from the Board of Ed, just from attending the meetings, I think it was, um, it was added by a Board of Ed member at their meeting. I think the board was very much appreciative that it was a number that was based on an estimate from another school that did a field, and I don't know what the background was of that field, but they said they did it around one point five million and the board was, at the time, appreciative that that was not to supplant any of the projects that had been on the waterfall for years and had received board approval. So that's still out there and, um, I guess at some point, um, discussed, but that's just a little bit of my, the backstory from just attending those meetings.
That's helpful, thank you.
Thanks, thanks Eli. Next up is, um, Wendy Falk, Capital Projects, uh, Manager. Uh, is Angela's going to be doing this with you? Okay, to hear an update on the facilities development R F P, and this involves the Dwight School and.
Thank you, good evening.
Does everyone know Wendy? Everyone you know Wendy?
I, I'm Wendy Falk with the Capital Projects Team. For those who don't know me, um, I'm here to give an update on the Dwight Elementary School and multi-site feasibility analysis and R F P. Uh, as you all know, uh, the town boards approved funding for a multi-site feasibility analysis, um, late last year. Um, as an update to the board, uh, the working group put together an R F P and released the R F P before the holidays, um, on December thirteenth. And we conducted a site walk right after the holidays. And most recently, we, we received five bids. Um, bids were due on the twenty eighth and, uh, we received those five bids from Russell and Dawson, Silver Petraselli, Slam Collaborative, Spiegels and Partners, and Wiles and, Wiles Architects. So that's, um, a good group, um, of some metals received. Um, our next steps are to, uh, interview the shortlisted, uh, firms and we're doing that next week. Purchasing has been working with us to schedule those interviews. Um, and we, uh, are under budget. Um, so just to, um, give the board a, a check in on that. We are under budget and the, uh, schedules that we received, um, will have us kicking off in March and completing the study um, in August, early August. So we're under budget and on, on schedule, um, at this time. Um, what our next steps will be, uh, will be to conduct those interviews of the shortlisted firms and come back to the board in a couple of weeks. Um, most likely on the nineteenth, um, we'll be back here um, to ask for approval once we, uh, agree to the final firm. Um, and, and then we'll move along to contract negotiations and, um, kicking off in March. So I think, uh, there's good progress, um, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I, I received a couple of emails, including from Christine Vitale, uh, but others as well, as to whether the Chairman of the Board of Ed will be at the meetings. I invited him, I think. Um, I think Eli invited him as well, but have you heard back whether he can make it?
Yes, I believe he confirmed correctly, like, um, he'll be attending the interviews next week.
And Angela's Papa Jurs will as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, can you just, for the public, you know, and I have not been shy about just some concerns about the Dwight piece would typically have gone to a school building committee. So some of the work that this group is going to be doing, um, you know, would have been done by a building committee and I still, you know, approved the million dollars to keep this project moving forward. Um, come August, what, what do you expect to have in terms of plans? Because when this idea, um, came up at a Board of Ed meeting, Silver Petraselli was at that meeting and talked about the need in order to get better numbers on the different scenarios at Dwight Elementary School, talked about needing, um, you know, more than conceptual design, something, something firmer that could get better pricing on the options. So do you anticipate that come August, you'll have those plans? Is that, is that part of, um, and members of the Board of Ed talked about just the deliverables at the end of this project and that at the end of the money that we're, you know, I want to make sure that we're not stalling this, that we're getting all the town boards, the information they need to make decisions that are both in the best interest from a financial and fiscal standpoint, but also for the long-term health and benefit of our school district. You know, typically a school build, I'm sure you know this, but just for the, you know, would go to their, the state has strict guidelines in terms of, um, parameters that need to be met, who serves on the building committee, part of the reason I reached out to the first selectman to make sure that the Board of Ed, um, Chair was invited or his designate, if he can't attend these meetings, was to make sure that we're kind of checking all the boxes from the state's perspective with this working group. So if and when, no, I'm saying when, it goes to the school building committee, there won't be any, we'll be able to transfer the work that's done by the working group now to another group in the future to make sure that this process doesn't hold us back and, um, Mr. Papa, but Mr., you know, just in terms of like the priority list, you know, there's just certain things that we're spending, we're spending money now and everyone has said there's an appreciation that, you know, something needs to be done at Dwight. Correct? Like into the building itself and that we just need to have a better understanding of what the costs and options will be. We're getting, we're having this feasibility study and whatever the, whatever the scenario that ends up moving forward is going to go to a building committee. So I just want to make sure that the work that we're doing now is going to be transferable, so we're not spending however, however much the Dwight.
Why don't you just, yeah, what do you expect to get?
Yeah, that's what I did, and I just wanted to kind of give context for why I'm asking.
So we did put together a very detailed scope in partnership with the Board of Ed and we are, um, aware that there are state guidelines in place that we will be looking at as we, uh, work on our deliverables. But at the end of the day, there are, I believe, eleven different scenarios that we will be looking at with the primary site and, and project being Dwight, but there are other projects um, in, in conjunction to Dwight. But at the end of the day, we will have a detailed feasibility analysis, including site, traffic, environmental conditions, um, concept designs and professional pricing for these eleven different scenarios and I believe five different site locations.
But the answer is not detailed plans, they're, they're concept design.
They're concept designs.
So it, it won't be enough to do a, a full, yeah, go ahead.
Can I just add to that?
I just want to know in terms of like, you know, the Board of Ed, there's, you know, put a request in for seed money, like, and some of this work, if that had moved forward, would have been gone to a building committee.
Absolutely.
And I know that the, the request was for a new build, but my understanding is just for the state, if you want state reimbursement, the state's going to want to know what other options that you, that you, um, explored. And to make sure that that's really the only option available. So this work needs to be done, um, in terms of looking at the different scenarios there, I think, in order to increase the likelihood of getting that state reimbursement.
Yeah, just to add to what Wendy was saying. Everything that we've done so far, we've checked in with the Board of Ed to make sure that we are with this C T, you know, the state reimbursement policy, similar to why we did an R F P instead of an R F Q. We did an R F P with sealed bid doc, with sealed proposals, because that's what the state requires us to do. So yes, we are moving forward and when a decision is made on what to do with the Dwight School, we have it aimed so that the firm that we are selecting now can just run with co- contract documents. So we don't need to go back and do an R F Q and R F P. So we, we are gearing up for exactly what you're saying, the project.
Just let's clarify though, with, if we film a form of building committee, they're not going to have a detailed design for a school.
No, right, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
They're having, they, they'll have all the options, which they didn't, which they would not have had, had, had you moved forward. They would not have had options, they would have had, uh, marching orders to build a building. Right, so, so what this is, is going to give them options, they can then decide which direction they want to go in, but they're still going to need to commission a detailed design of the building. They, we're not going to design, uh, th- these guys, um, whoever we choose, aren't going to design a school for, for Dwight.
Not if, but we're going to be farther than, you know.
Silver Petraselli.
There's just, you know, the conceptual design, the schematic design, like where are we going? You know, and I just want to make sure that we're just using our money wisely. You know, appreciate that the Board of Ed has already acted on this, whether or not, you know, I don't think it's really, not looking to debate that, if we wanted to debate that, they can present to us. Um, just want to, just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page. Appreciate that, I'm glad that the Board of Ed Chair is, um, involved, that he can be part of the process, he can report back to his board and they can, you know, ask any questions and bring it back to you. And I think that we all, um, you know, want the same thing. But, um, just want to make sure that we're using this money wisely and then at the end of this.
What are you asking for, Christine?
I'm just, I just want to get clarification that we're making sure.
That we're using the money wisely?
No, just, it would be unfortunate to get to the point when this is done, that it goes to a building committee and potentially a repeating work. And I just want.
Yeah, let's nail, let's, can we concentrate on that? So what do you expect to get? Everything, a conceptual.
We will have a detailed feasibility analysis, comprehensive feasibility analysis and concept design. The next phase would be schematic and construction documents, whether or not this same firm does that work, T B D.
And just to your point that it's, we're looking at these buildings for aside from the school part of it, have you received, um, just any guidance from the Health Department or Human Services, Parks and Rec, in terms of what they're, even the Board of Ed for Ed specs, or what their, their use would be for these buildings and working with them, I know.
Yes, so that's part of the scope that the architect and engineer will be conducting stakeholder meetings as part of the initial, um, March, spring timeline. Um, that'll be the initial bucket of work, along with the site explorations.
And just, I know that part of this, the scope of this was doing, um, soil analysis. Are we concerned, having just had the discussion about, you know, seek and you shall find, and if you find, what, do we open ourselves up to risk with that?
Everything that we're doing in this, in this R F P is going to be used to move forward in however manner that we decide to use. We're going to already have the soil samples, we're going to already have the analysis of each building. So they're going to be able to build off of what we're doing now, in every way, shape.
Eli, that's a really good question, because what if the answer is renovate the existing school, but you've done the soil samples on the upper field and they come back polluted? Do, are we going to then have to take all that soil out?
If it's polluted, no, again, polluted does not mean you have to touch it.
If it's, if it's contaminated, once we know, which probably is a good thing, right? So I'm not sure it's a bad thing. Like that, that you would know if you have contaminated soil, then you want to remove it regardless. So I guess that's not really a risk, it would be a risk of not knowing.
Well, the risk of just escalated cost.
Escalated cost.
Of anything else. I mean, and these, these fields have all been, you know, were tested.
Twenty nineteen.
I mean, so not necessarily, um, anticipating that, but just want to understand better of, um, what might be coming down the line after we just found out, you know, nine hundred thousand dollars more for us, this, the field project that no one's fault, that it was just there. And when you find it, you have to obviously, you know, do what's in the best interest, especially when you're talking about school grounds.
So, but, but I think this is important. So what we're hearing is that, um, what they expect to get is schematics, not, yeah, not, I mean, um, conceptual design, not schematics and not design. So, so this is going to, really, it, it kicks off the process of where I thought the Board of Ed, you know, could have been, um, you know, with more work over the last couple of years, maybe, um, with recommending something on that site, um, with answers to other questions that they could then say, no, this, this is the right thing to do and we could prove it. There wasn't the proof, thi- this will allow them to understand what the options are, because they didn't really understand what the options were. But it's not going to provide, it really doesn't take out much of the, I don't think it, 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 it doesn't reduce most of what the, um, building committee is going to do, right? They'll have schematic, they'll have, um, conceptual design, but they still need to go out and do all those steps. So it doesn't really save, save that much time.
And, and my memory might be off in this, but I thought that at that Board of Ed meeting and I attended a facilities committee meeting and asked Silver Petraselli for, just for of what they would need to give a better idea of actual costs. And I thought that it needed to be farther along in the design process. So another thing that I don't want to have happen, that we do this work and then we, we're based off, we had, we come up with numbers and then after taking the time and spending the money, that we're pretty much back with not really having the answers.
Where have the big?
And I, and this is not, I mean, just something, I'm, I'm sharing this with you now, just as you interview, and you're going to be going through this and just kind of getting a read on where the art architects are and see if there's a difference of opinion in terms of what they need to give you really strong numbers. Because at the end of this, we want really, we want to know, I mean, I think that some of your concerns were, you know, it could be. I mean, I think that some of your concerns were, you know, it could be estimated to be cost sixty million dollars, but at the end of the day, once they get in there, it could end up being a hundred.
Eighty million or whatever.
Whatever.
Yeah.
And that we're going through this process to prevent that from happening.
Right. So that, and that's what's happened in the past, like you break into a wall. Oh my God, there's stuff in there that I didn't know. I mean, we should know what's behind the wall.
But are they going to be going into the, I mean, I just want to have, that's really just don't.
Those big things will, will should factor. In the past, you would start the project with a number, then you find out there's all sorts of stuff that you didn't factor in. And then all of a sudden, it's more expensive, a lot, a lot more expensive than like Riverfield or Osborne Hill cases, like you, um, we should have answers to those things in the soil and, and behind the walls.
To some extent. I mean, we're not going to be tearing, I mean, there's an existing school that have children, and so we're not going to be really.
But they will.
So I think that there's only, you know, I'm just keeping it like realistic of what, in terms of the scope of this. There's, there are limitations of what can be done there.
Well, not much has been done to date.
Well, and I, and I.
So they don't really know the costs of renovating or the cost of building a school. So those big unknowns should be answered from this project, but not the design of the school.
What it's going to ultimately look like. And I just, you know, and this is, my questions are from just very brief comments by other contractors that we're not going to be able to give you the kind of numbers you want until we know the grading of the parking lot, which is a lot, was a big cost driver at Dwight, if it moves up to the top field. You know, the, the potential for any sort of hazardous materials. I don't know if we'll, I know that through this process. I mean, just judging from school, other school building projects, you know, you just don't know what you're going to run into until construction begins. And you know, that's.
But all those are part of the project.
Exactly. So, so we will look at all of those components in detail, in more detail than previously done and also build in contingencies. So there will be a lot of contingencies at this budgeting stage, but you know, in order to get super accurate numbers, you would go out to bid to the market, you know, so we were not going to that place. We're getting preliminary numbers with concept designs for many different scenarios, which what were not done in the past.
And I, I think this is where I'm struggling. Because for school building projects, and I know that some school building projects went out to bid. But over the last, I don't know, se- seven years, we've gotten the seed money for a school building project first. We've gone in, done the work, gotten a better idea of the number. You know, gone out to bid for things, brought in contractors and then went to town boards to ask for the full funding. And I feel like we were, the Board of Ed kind of was going in that direction. And.
They were going in that.
Yeah, well, they were, they were going in that direction. And this is where I'm, I'm still kind of struggling between this, this work being done and getting, making sure that we're getting the, the, the same, a better number as if we had just spent this million dollars to seed money. I want to make sure the information at the end of this process is the same. And that's, and that's something I'm not answering to answer. I'm just want you to know where I am.
Information after we go out and bid for a design.
Well, I want to.
After the Board of Ed.
Spending a million dollars right now and ultimately, you know, it's not like the project group is going to decide what you know, where we're going to be sending these kids. I mean, the Board of Ed, that is their purview to make that decision. So I just want to be cognizant of that and I want to make sure that we're, we're getting good information. We're spending money to get good information that can move this project along. And that we're not going to be starting from square one and having to start with the building committee for the, the same amount of money that's currently being requested.
Well, you see what's on the schedule and if we get answers to those questions, do you see value in, in that information?
I just want to make, and I'm, I'm glad that they, I want to make sure that everybody is on the same page with this. And thank you for your patience with this. I mean, I think this is a a new approach. And appreciate, I'm open to new approaches, but I also, you have to give me some leeway of being on the Board of Ed and being a Chair of that board and seeing how old approaches. You know, seemingly have worked. And this team could be working with a building committee in collaboration and maybe get a better result that was done in the past. And that's all. So thank you. Just appreciate that I'm going to have a, eventually there's a contract that's going to be before me to vote on, and I want to be, I have a better understanding of what exactly I'm going to be approving. Because when the first a million dollars, it happened kind of quickly. I'm just wondering, doing my due diligence. So thank you for.
Well, I think it's a good conversation to know what we're going to be getting from this, but you know, the the reason this came about is first of all, every project is somewhat different, unique in its own way. This project is, I don't know if you can say this in the, in the, in the English language, is more unique in that in that normally when you go to a, a building committee, you have a site. And you say, here's your site and it, it's Riverfield, it's Osborne Hill, it's Holland Hill. And there's some parameters that you can work within and changes that you can make, but you assign either building Roger Ludlow to a building committee, but or usually it's renovating, but you have the site chosen. And, you know, for the elementary school, it has always been, other than Burr, has always been a renovation of a school. This is different. And so what the Board of Ed came to us with was approval to do something very, very different at a very high price tag. And all, really this is saying, well, we, it wouldn't have passed. I mean, you know, I can't read everyone's mind, but I know that it would not have passed. It would have been set back a long time. So this is hopefully going to ultimately make it a faster, more efficient process. But what comes out of this has to inform, you know, we can't force the Board of, we're not going to, this will be done once this information comes out, you know. But it won't be done from the board level, because the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance may hear what the Board of Ed does with that information. And they may say, well, it might be cheaper to do it at this place, but we still like that place better and we're willing to spend twenty million more. That might end up reject, getting it rejected at the board level anyway, but at least or they, you know, they, they'll be able to defend their decision, which I think it was really not, they were not able to do that last summer.
I don't want to make assumptions for how people would have voted and how it would have played out right now. My focus right now is.
Yeah, I mean, I polled the Board of Finance, it would have been rejected. So that's like a fact. So I, you know, this, this is a way forward for.
And, and I'm, I'm, I am not saying that it is not a way forward. I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page and that, you know, we've had school communities that are concerned about this, that some of the questions that are being asked by parents are being asked publicly, that they're getting answers from the appropriate people that.
Well, my perspective on this is, this has been on the docket for how many years? Ten years, fifteen years, whatever. The Board of Ed failed to do anything about it. And then, and then it came up and as a, this is what we're going to do and it's got to be this year and it's got to be this. And that's what we're, like, that was going to fail. So what I, what I would like to do is in the most, I think what this project does in the most efficient way. Because if we did it through a, a building committee, this part of it would go slower. So what hopefully this will do would be to get you, the Board of Ed, the information they can do to move faster with better information. That's the purpose.
And I'm not questioning, I understand the purpose of it. I just want to make sure that it's clear on the information.
That it's the right information.
At the end of the day, we're just getting the information that everybody needs to to move it forward.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is we have a list, you have a matrix. If something was missing, somebody should have raised their hand and said, this is missing or that is missing, because that is what they're going to be doing, but we can add to that.
I mean, I think.
So someone can raise their hand today and say we should add to it. It would be a change, change order.
Well, nothing's been, nothing's been approved. We don't have a, we don't have a vendor, like, we're not, there's not.
They bid. We have envelopes. We're going to be opening up the envelopes, but we can still add to it. If anyone on the Board of Ed would like to see something else.
I'm, I'm, I'm not speaking for the Board of Ed. Mr. Peterson has been involved in the project. Mr. Papadouris is involved in the project. I'm not speaking for the Board of Ed.
Or you, you can raise something if you want.
And I.
If you want to add, if you want to add something specific.
I am doing, I, I'm raising it right now. I just, I'm just asking the questions, right?
Something specific, like a task. If you, if there's something you want them to look at, you should tell this group.
I.
And they can add it to the, to the matrix.
I want to make sure that the end of this, that there are, that there are documents that can go to a building committee pretty, pretty similar to what would have happened if we sent this to a building committee and giving a building committee a million dollars. Let's forget about whatever the, the ask was, because we could have given a building committee, you have a million dollars and this is what we want you to do. And want to make sure that at the end of this, we just have information to make informed decisions. And we're not at a place where saying, we still need more because this was only bet based on, you know, a conceptual design and we really can't get hard numbers until we do this work and it's going to cost you know, three million dollars to do all that work. And now we've invested four million dollars into getting the answers and where you know, the ti- the timeline is ticking and I'm cognizant of getting on the priority list for state reimbursement, because this is absolutely you know, a large price tag. And I think that maximizing the state reimbursement is something that we should all be cognizant of.
Absolutely.
And that's, and so in terms of timing, like, I want to just make sure that we're moving this along, so that we don't get to the point where the school district wants to get on the, we go to our state reps and like, well, you don't have the information you need and we miss the deadline. So I'm sure you're working with Angeles on this. He will give you the deadline that, you know, we're moving it along quicker to make sure that we're still within that timeline to apply for reimbursement to maximize.
It's also part of the scope for the consultant. So we're, we hear you and it will be in lockstep with Angeles and the Board of Ed. And we will make sure that as we finalize the kickoff schedule that we, we fine tune any steps.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not suggesting any supply trust, you know, you are the professionals. Totally you know, support the First Lookman's vision and bringing building in-house expertise on this and moving forward to other building committees. That, you know, that, that would be more collaboration between Board of Ed, residents, your, your group. I think it's, you know, a beginning, I think, but with, with anything that's new, I think it's just good to make sure that the communication is open. Everybody understands. And also for the public, you know, building committees, whatever you can say, plus or minus is successful, not successful. There was just an air of transparency for the public to know what's going on. So thank you for, you know, coming before us today just to report out. You know, good luck with the interviews. I hope that, you know, you are, we've got some good bidders that are ready to move this work forward. And just to be forewarned, going to be asking for updates as the project moves forward.
Absolutely. We'll be back in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. And Ms. Kupchak, I'm sorry, I monopolized the conversation.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Brenda.
No, I mean, you have concerns and, you know, I, I think you're, they're valid. I mean, it does seem like it's been spinning a while. How much money have, have we spent already out of the million?
Uh, hey Brenda, this is Eli. The, the, we haven't, we're conducting interviews, so we want to hold the, the numbers. You know, we don't want to publicly say the numbers only because we haven't, yeah, we haven't done the interviews. Interviews are next week, so we don't want to go public with the numbers.
Okay, so the interviews for work, so basically nothing, no real work has been done yet. Is that true or?
Through the consultants, no. No, all the work has been done in-house, be able to prepare for the RFP.
Okay, so, so you really haven't spent any of the million that we appropriated?
Right, right.
I, I, I mean, I'm just going to say, you know, someone who served in the legislature a long time and you know, ran the town for four years. I think, I don't see how we're going to make this, uh, school, uh, construction grant timeline. Christine, to be perfectly honest, I, I mean, I think a decision would have to be made fairly quickly for us to be able to make it.
For, for the meta or?
For the re, for the reimbursement or for the construction grants, this, this go around anyway.
Yeah, this won't be ready until August. This, this report, they're saying won't be ready until August.
So we're going to miss, we're going to miss it, Christine. We're not going to make it.
Or starting, yeah, I'm not sure. Want to comment, David? For, for what? For next year?
For construction grants.
For breaking ground when? I'm not sure what, what it means. We're going to miss it for, for next year.
You would still need time for construction documents and to bid and all of that.
That, that would have been, for next year would have been May, right?
That, that would still push you into the next year.
Have to design the building before May.
Twenty twenty six.
It's on the waterfall for twenty six, I thought I saw.
The, the idea is to do the feasibility in the fall and then move into construction drawings and have construction drawings be wrapped up by springtime of next year. Ready to go out to bid.
And that's obviously so if everybody agrees on whatever solution is comes out of all this, looking at stuff.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that, that has, it has to go through the process. You know, we've come a long way, like a couple of years ago, they were talking about closing Dwight. And then a couple of years ago, it was a twenty million dollar project and then it was a thirty million dollar project. Think we're, now it's a sixty-five billion gross of reimbursement of doing one project. So you know, this will, this will happen, like, once we get this document, we're going to pass this over to the Board of Ed and they're going to go through their normal processes. So however long that takes, and that's going to have to require Board of Ed approval.
Just for the public, the, the ECC part of it is, is new. And that, so when we're quoting the numbers, I think it's important to realize that it's not comparing, we're not comparing apples to apples, that this.
Right, that was added on.
Right, so there's, there's.
This year.
Yeah, so it's not just be careful when throwing around numbers that we're not talking about numbers from six years ago. For a host of reasons changed, but.
No, but I'm right, right? We were talking about closing Dwight a few years ago.
Well, we were, we were, we were talking about.
This was on the waterfall, kept getting moved, and then we're talking about closing Dwight.
We were, we got.
And we're not there anymore.
No, because we did.
So we've made progress.
The Board of Ed, you know, did the work of, yes, we absolutely wanted to be fiscally responsible and explore all, all options about whether or not we needed to operate with eleven or ten elementary schools. And after going through multiple rounds with a demographer, it was agreed upon that forget about just Dwight, for the overall district, that we do need eleven elementary schools, but wanted to get that answer before we went to town bodies asking for millions of dollars for school construction projects. So that work was done and you know, as, has been reported out, the needs in terms of the early childhood center and the need for preschool and universal preschool and being forward thinking for where education is going and just the growth of our town. And this opportunity of.
But I'm just saying, we've made a lot of progress. We've made a lot of progress. We went from six million dollars on the waterfall for many years.
Yeah, I think the part of that.
Fifteen million dollars and then looking at closing Dwight. Now no one's talking about closing Dwight, as far as I know. And, but then we got a sixty-five million dollar proposal, gross of reimbursement with an ECC. And, and so now, however long it takes to get, make sure that we know that this is the right way of doing it. That's how long it's going to take. So we're going to deliver, I think these guys think we're going to deliver this product by August. Then it's up to the Board of Ed to, to make the determination. Then they'll have to approve a project and they're going to have to go through all the steps. So however long that takes, it, it can, it depends, but the alternative would have been to rush through something that would have failed. So.
I'm glad that just, and my, that these questions were just to make sure that the end of this process, that we have the information. that we have the information that we need with really strong numbers, because I know there was concerns about the price of this escalating. And doing this work right now, um, puts us in the position that we know the, the cost that we're gonna be so set on the numbers that we get after doing this. Um, and that is money was, well spent.
So just to, you know, point out, I mean, if, if, if we're not gonna have any information till August and to Eli's point, we're, we're not gonna have a shovel on the ground till twenty-six. I mean, we're looking, we're not, I don't think we're gonna have a shovel on the ground till twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, right? Oh, wait.
Just based on everything that. I don't see how you get a shovel on the ground before twenty-seven.
Well, I'm not sure, when, when did they think they were gonna have a, when did you think you were gonna have a shovel on the ground, Christine?
I, I, I was not on the Board of Education. I didn't vote on this. I mean, if we wanna ask. If I think that if we really.
Twenty-six, so this, this delays, I mean, we are, we have to leave the, the, um uh, building committee by, I mean, if it's, it'll be what, eight months, eight months delay or seven, seven, eight months delay. And, you know, that is a fact.
Well, and I, I. But if some of this work, the building committee would be doing some of this work. So even if you're delaying it, I guess the start of these questions is when the building, if, you know, let's assume there's a building committee, when they start that there's gonna be stuff, they're not gonna, the building committee is not gonna be starting from ground zero. There's gonna be deliverables from this to the building committee to move things forward. And because.
Will you see on that matrix what is gonna be delivered? So I assume, I mean, you've read it, right? So on, on the matrix, on, on, maybe on, on the, um.
Well, I, 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 I'm not gonna necessarily know, I don't think what's gonna be delivered until we get the contract to approve.
But the RFP has, has a matrix of what they're bidding on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have, we weren't, we didn't vote on the RFP, we didn't discuss the RFP, appreciate that that is the work of the working group. Had some just concerns about, asked, I did give feedback prior to it going out to bid. Shared my concerns about making the deadlines for state reimbursement. Shared my concerns about making sure that we, that we are not stalling the process, because when I voted on the million dollars, it wasn't gonna be stalling the process. Making sure that we have, that we are, this money is being used wisely and can be then be taken up and by you being used by a building committee to move Dwight forward, not debating that it has been, you know, it is long overdue. Take responsibility for, you know, not moving forward.
Essentially, this is, didn't move forward quickly because you know, you know, for a lot of reasons. Most of them have nothing to do with this process.
I, I just, but we're, we're going, we went down this road to get better information and information that could then be used by a building committee and getting us further along. That's all I wanna make, just that we're, that we're, we're ma- we're maximizing time and money.
All I can say is the, the RFP and the matrix for the RFP has been available to everyone.
I know, and I've given, I've given feedback.
And, and anyone who wants to add to that, that should do it.
I don't.
And, and the, you know, Angeles, you know, has been involved in the process the whole, the whole way through. Um, so, you know, if there's something missing from that, that someone sees which the, the building committee should have, they should speak up. Because it's a pretty big matrix. It's got a lot on it. And the intent is for the Board of Ed to be able to make a decision in a way that can pass three boards. Because if you do all the work with the building committee and you don't present something that can pass, that's a real waste of time.
I'm, I'm not right now advocating for not doing this and getting a building committee instead. I'm just making sure that some of this work that would have been done by a building committee is deliverable for a building committee to take it up, so we don't have to spend money possibly doing it again.
I've heard you say that.
Well, I mean, but you, I don't know why you're, why you're making me feel like I'm.
Because there's an RFP that was worked on by these, by this team with the school district.
And I'm.
And passed around. So if something's missing that the building committee should have, I'm just asking.
Isn't a building committee.
But there will be a building.
There isn't a building committee right now.
There will be a building.
This is, we're not.
Their ability committee is gonna be formed. They're gonna get the report.
And listen.
And if they look at and say, we don't like, but it's gonna be public. They're gonna be able to look at a report and make a decision about the right way to go.
We're going around in circles right now. Um. I think that you know where my priorities and my concerns are.
You want a, the school, yeah, I get it, I get it. I get it. We all do. We all want a school.
I think that that is.
We all want a good school there. I mean, that's definitely the priority, is either a renovated school or a new school.
I wanna, I do want a school built. I would like a school built there sooner rather than later.
With an ECC or without an ECC?
Sooner rather than later.
With the CLC or without a CLC? Like I, you know, there's.
We're not having that. If we, if you wanted us to have that discussion, we could bring the Board of Ed, it's capital request before this board and we can have the Board of Ed here and we could have that discussion with the Board of Ed. I appreciate that it's not fair to put it on this group to have that discussion. That is not their purview, that is not the job they are tasked to do. I just wanna make sure that as they are moving forward that they understand and speaking to the people that bid on this where um, the expectation is. And for this, for Mr. Papa George and Mr. Mr. Peterson, who are not here who are also advocates that they can, and are gonna be part of this discussion, that they can share that as well. And interviewing, just, these are some questions that I'm asking you that I would hope that you would just ask the people that are bidding. So you have a better idea of where we all are. I think that we are all, um, you know, on the same page.
Well, this is where I, I'm getting stuck, Christine. I, we have an RFP, they're gonna, they've, they're replying to the RFP. So you know what we're asking them to do. And so anyone who looks at the RFP and the matrix and thinks that's not what the, you know, is gonna, that's not enough.
Guess that I've just been through, just been on building committees and just seen how once things, once the work starts how new information comes up, how things get delayed, how we have, you know, we have seed money at one school and there's a plan, there's a conceptual design and then it goes to a building committee and the building committee takes the conceptual design and just goes in a totally different direction. And I just don't wanna, I wanna make sure that the communication from this group as they interview people and move it forward is just clear on that. That's, that's it. I'm not saying.
That's the thing is, is they're gonna deliver what's on the RFP. And the building committee is gonna do whatever the building committee does. And sometimes they go in a different direction. But at least they'll have.
Okay, but I think that, you know, if it's, if it's a, a strong product that comes out of this, it's less likely to make that happen, Mr. Beck.
If I may.
Can I just ask a question? Um, I, Christine, I think you cut, you had a good idea there. Um, maybe it's, you know, instead of going around and round about this. Um, and we have spent quite a bit of time on it. Um, do you think that maybe once those it, those interviews are completed and we have that, um, contractors that we, maybe can we have a special meeting to Christine's point? To have, with, with the, with the Board of Education and, and have this dialogue together as a, as a two boards, I mean, would that, would that be helpful?
I don't think so. The Board of Ed can vote on it, but not with, not us, I mean.
I mean, just, it's just a meeting to have a discussion. Once we have the information, I mean, Christine, you know, is.
I mean, if, I mean.
I think it's a good idea what she recommended. Christine, what do you think?
I understand, um, you know, why the board voted the way that they did and all the different scenarios. I don't wanna, I just, the first selectman was asking me questions about what the Board of Ed did and I just don't feel comfortable speaking for the Board of Ed. I, you know, I do it every once in a while and stuff that I did and for meetings, but in this particular thing, I, I don't wanna put, I don't wanna misspeak. Um, so he asked the question, I didn't feel comfortable giving the answer. If a public, more public discussion is needed, then I will defer the first selectman to whether, move that forward.
I think if the Board of Ed wants more done, then the, and the board, you know, or wants to do a vote of confidence or no confidence. I mean, this has been circulated with the Board of Ed. We've had Board of Ed people in our meetings to develop an RFP.
And I'm not.
And so, and so, you know, you know what we, what we are tasking, um, a, a third part, a, a developer, a designer, a engineering company to deliver and throughout the process, once, you know, and the Board of Ed's gonna help select the, uh, the person, the, 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 um, the company. There's no point, I think it's, it's at this point, you know, of having, you know, a, a meeting, a, or with, with, about what? I mean, we could give it to the Board of Ed and ask them to, you know, give them the option of voting on it, which I think, you know, we, we invited the Board of Ed to, to these meetings with, um, when we were developing this RFP. Or at least we, we invited the chairman and the.
How many meetings did they, did you have with them, Bill?
Many, many meetings with, with Angeles. Um, Jeff Peterson was at at least a couple. Um, and it developing an RFP, we circulated the RFP and we were asked for, for comments on it. It was, I mean, if there is anything that, that should have been added, there was a lot of opportunity for the Board of Ed to add something. So I just wanna make sure the expectations are like, this isn't a magical, like, it's not gonna come up with like a magical thing that, that the Board of Ed's gonna be able to use to not do other stuff. There will be certain things on this report which should help them in the process. For example, soil samples at Dwight or if, if, if they will reconsider, you know, um, renovating Dwight, they will know hopefully that what, what that means and, and, and what, where the pitfalls might be. Or if they wanna build up on the, on the hill, they should know with this report what the implications are for a new sewer system. Or for the soil or the ledge. I mean, those are big items that could sway this by many, many millions of dollars. That should be in, in, in their hands and the other sites. And so that they can say, okay, we can't do it up on the hill for X, Y, and Z reason, or we can't renovate the, the school for X, Y, and Z reason. This helps the Board of Ed Building Committee narrow things down and they will have information in this report which should help jumpstart their process.
And that's, that's all I was asking for, was the information that would be passed on to a town building committee. Like, building committees are not Board of Ed. Those, these are, this is gonna be a building committee that the Board of Selectmen commissions.
Right.
This is gonna fall under us. Like, the Board of Ed, you know, they're gonna put in the funding request. They're, they do their work and then it comes to us. And then we do our work. And right now, um, I appreciate where we are with this. And I, and I'm not, please don't take these questions as criticism of, of, of the group or the work. Um, you know, you're gonna be getting information and I think that's to the point of soil testing, if we know like, well, it's definitely not gonna work. Like, this could be staging in terms of getting information. You may get a piece, piece of information to be like, it's not gonna.
I think there will be, definitely be staging, like, the work, some of the work will be done.
And I, and I read the RFP that there, that there's, you know, um, that evaluation. The soil sampling is something that, um, and I, this is where I defer to Mr. Papa George, Mr. Morbeto, you know, the team in terms of knowing if you need to go a little bit further with the soil testing, so it doesn't have to get done again. Like, this is just the type of stuff that I would, I'm, and I'm sure you probably are thinking this, but just wanna, um, you know, put it out there. It's not, not saying, don't do it, or my, my concerns about the timeline, shared with Mr. Becker. He know, I mean, understand, so it's not like I'm suggesting that we rewrite the RFP or just wanna make sure, I've shared my feedback on that. Um, sharing it again publicly, just so people know where I am with it. They know what where I am with it as they move this forward. That's it.
Yeah, I may think we've learned that like, everyone knows what this report is gonna produce. That it's not gonna be something that's gonna be handed over, built to a building committee and that they can go out to bid with for construction. It's gonna be something, they're still gonna have to get a design done. So, you know, the, the ex, that, that should be the expectation. Um, but even leading up to deciding, they'll have information. Hopefully, they should have information will allow them to decide what it is they're gonna ask to get designed. Because the assumption was based on no written work that I can find was that there was one option and that was to build a school in a, a new school in a new location up on the hill without knowing the implications of that, which would have failed. And I wa- I was trying to avert disaster on that, in that respect. And I think this process will help us avert either disaster of having it fail at the board level or disaster of starting and then having to stop. So hopefully we'll have answers to, to the big questions, because, you know, personally, I, I don't, you know, the rush is a recent rush. Because it was pushed off for so long. Now it's a rush. That is, you know, um, that is something I understand. That parents don't want their kids going into that school anymore, but, you know, this has been going on for a very, very long time, converting it from a renovation to a new building, uh, at a different location with an ECC was a massive jump in escalation in the project. This, this school could have been renovated years ago. And it wasn't.
Well, there was only, there was only so much money to.
There's only so much money now. We've opened up the checkbook for HVAC in a way that wasn't even imaginable. So you know, it's not like there's more money now. It's, we're, we're, we're gonna be spending more money on schools than, than ever before. So.
I, I think that there is just, you know, we have, we are a, um, there are a lot of schools with a lot of needs or town buildings that we have to, to maintain, just like there are town, other town facilities and unfortunately, you can't do everything all at once.
Right, and Dwight wasn't.
And Dwight basically, you know, kept on getting in priorities, ended up.
Now, it's not being neglected. There's a process in place, yeah, right. So we're talking about timing, but I'm, I'm telling you that this in my mind is the most efficient way to make sure it gets done. Otherwise, it would, wouldn't get done, most likely. It, it would be pushed back to the beginning. So, you know, if it failed, I don't know, what do you do then? You start with a whole nother um, process. So we're trying to avoid that.
I, I'm not saying that we're not trying to avoid that.
Anyway, we should, you wanna move on?
Sure.
Did Brenda, any more comments?
Um, no, um. However, I am looking at the agenda and I'm seeing, looking at the time and I was wondering if, um, that you and Christine would consider a, a, a proposal to, uh, postpone the, uh, capital, uh, uh, update, because I was very interested in that. Um, and actually, I'm, uh, my hip's killing me and we're, we're heading into two and a half hours and I didn't wanna rush that update, cause.
Well, where is, um.
You know, it's a, it's something I wanted to take time to look at and ask a lot of questions about. Do you think maybe we could?
Push it off?
Schedule it to maybe a special meeting or if the agenda for our next meeting isn't too crowded. We could do it then, if that would be all right or agree.
We can do the, can we do the capital?
You've got HVAC as well.
And I don't know who's giving it. Yeah, they're out here. They're, we're gonna do the HVAC update.
Yes, that's fine. We have, you have a, you have a thirteen, item number thirteen.
I, I can push off fifteen.
Brenda, this is, the capital is going before the Board of Finance tomorrow also, just, I don't know what you're, well, we have.
They're gonna be reviewing, but you know, that, that's typical that.
They're not voting on it or anything.
It's just a review, yeah.
So it's really just so we have it.
I just, I would like a little bit more time to, you know, ask a lot of questions and I'm, I'm. Two and, two and a half hours.
Should we vote to, well, let's, yeah, should we vote to push? Should we vote to, well, let's, yeah, should we vote to push off the, um, capital, um, Plan Workshop waterfall schedule until the next meeting? Okay, all in favors?
Brenda, make the motion, I'll second it.
Say aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, yes. Next meeting. And, okay, is Jeff Galdancy here? Jeff, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, guys.
Oh, you've been here a long time, oh my god.
You should have been, you, you, if you guys came into the room, maybe it would have stopped sooner. We could have been like, oh my gosh, we have to stop this going around in circles, these guys are waiting for us.
We were saying the same thing in the hallway, but
You should have come in.
You could have, you would have stopped.
All right, so let's get you guys out of here.
All right.
This is the, um, update of the HVAC IQ Committee, so we have, um, uh, I'm Jeff Galdancy on the chair. I have Rodney Van Duzen is the Vice Chair, Joe Valley is Secretary, so there's three of us that make up the committee. And we also have which is our owner's rep and colleagues. And these here as well from the Board of Education. So just to recap, on the scope of, of what was referred to as Phase One, included the three schools, North Stratfield, Fairfield Woods in Osborne, so when the backup material has the breakout, but in North Stratfield, we had HVAC upgrades, we had a new roof and security vestibles. Um, I put the original numbers in here, because there was, there was an issue where the, uh, original numbers, I guess, this predated me, but it was based on conceptual, uh, not detailed design, so there was a requirement to come back to the boards and ask for more money, so that the original HVAC number that's quoted there reflects that number. And the, uh, the bullets above each one reflect the, the revised, so that sixteen point seven million is the total for North Stratfield, and the breakouts there is the eleven point six million for HVAC, four point four for the roof, and about seven hundred thousand for the vestibule. Um, for Fairfield Woods Middle, we have the eighteen point five million. That is just HVAC in the vestibule, and then Osborne Hill was a ten point four million HVAC invest, security vestibule as well. All three schools are on budget or under budget. All three schools are on time. But, uh, front time uh, phases two through five on your waterfall. We were charged with bringing those phases through detailed design, so that has been completed as well. With Tomlinson, Ludlow, Walter Fitz, and Ward, those have all been, the details have all been submitted to the boards, that was part of your waterfall creation for this, this past year. Um, and Tomlinson has been handed off to this committee to work on, so Tomlinson has a a new roof being put on by the Special Building Committee, and we have the HVAC component. In the backups is the package, so just the summary on the, the project schedules. All of the schools are targeted for completion this summer. So, we will, we, we will not have air conditioning, just to be clear, the, the schools won't have air conditioning in the new areas for this summer, but they should have it for the next, starting in the, the fall, so the fall of twenty twenty five, they'll have the air conditioning. Um, and then there's a breakout of each one, so Phase One, North Stratfield, as I said, it's on target for the completion of summer twenty twenty five, it is on budget. Based on contracted work, it's about eighty, but eighty will, about eighty eight point six percent complete, so just to put the, uh, that in context. The second round of the HVAC work is underway, so there was demolition, and if you will, because the schools are being retrofitted, all of the existing drop ceilings have to be removed. All the new duck work has to be put in, and then the new drop ceilings are put in, so it, it was done in two phases, it was done last summer and this summer, if you will. Um, then also through school breaks, it's being worked on. So when I take about the second rounds, that's what I'm referring to, is there's most of the schools, roughly half the work has been completed from a duck work and replacement ceiling. Um, so there is all of the demolitions, all of the demolition in all three schools is complete, so we're talking about North Stratfield, the demolition's complete. Wire management is around, there's a tremendous amount of wires that have been run over the years in these schools. So when you pull the drop ceilings down, there's a lot of existing wires, pipes, other things that have to be, uh, dealt with at times, sprinkler heads. In North Stratfield, the duck work is scheduled to start later this month. The electrical systems in the schools also had to be upgraded. So that's the amount of electricity coming off the street, had to be upgraded to handle the new load with the air conditioning units. So that work is being in, done in conjunction with UI. So, in North Stratfield, we're, we're looking to pull that in during the, uh, the breaks prior to the summer and finish that up, uh, right now it is officially scheduled for summer, so we are looking to pull that in. And also with, with the construction, new lights are being put in, so there's LED based lights going up in replacement for the existing lights. Uh, like I said, the new ceiling tiles are being put in, and then there's, uh, new sprinkler heads that are being put in place for all of them. Uh, security vestibule. The, the contractor for the glass has been determined, all of the specs are out, so the, the actual orders will be going in soon. For the vessels, those, that work will also be done this summer, so the construction and, um, secure glass will all be installed. And then in North Stratfield, we have the roof, the second half will be this spring and summer, so there's more roof work to do. And then the, from a financial perspective, that school is about six point nine percent under budget as, as of now. Any questions in North Stratfield? The others, I, I broke them out, but they're all, it's all very similar projects, very similar experiences. Again, all the demos completes, this school is eighty nine point two percent complete. So they're all about that eighty nine percent complete. They're all, the demos completed all three. The duck works in various stages, so I mentioned in North Stratfield, it's going to be started soon. In Fairfield Woods, it's ongoing, in Osborne Hill, it's also ongoing, and it's started. Same thing, sorry, yes.
Glass for the lead time, like how?
Yeah, it's about, uh, it was fourteen weeks, it's down to twelve, but it's well within our cushion, so we're expecting
Coming from?
The, the contractor who won the glass is Cherry Hill out of Branford.
Sure, yeah, Cherry Hill class.
So that's, um,
It's in this country?
In this country, it's, yes.
Well, we've had
I, I should call out
Had issues in the past with just things.
Yeah, all of, all of the capital equipment is already been purchased and is on site or in storage, so there is no there are no large components that need to be purchased or delivered, so there should be no impact to any supply chain disruptions or cost modifications in that regard.
That's very good news.
Can you explain, you know, the under budget North Stratfield project, like what, what drove that?
What drove it to be under budget?
Yeah.
A great building committee.
Honestly, thank you.
There's, um, there's, there's, uh, the estimates were in place, and a lot of the, um, the ATPs have been minimal. And we've been able to control the budget for, uh, ATPs being of authorization to proceed for change orders, I guess is a commonly used phrase, so any of the additional work, um.
On each project, in this, this, this is a reflection of what is
Or, or what's like typical contingency?
It ranges between five and ten percent.
Five and ten, okay, so you're just not having, if it's ten, you haven't eaten into all your
So we're just, yeah, we, we, it's been a very, it's been a very mild, uh, impact on the contingency side, yes. Most of the, most of the major, the demolition was the big unknown, right? What, what are you going to expose behind the, so we did have, um, North Stratfield did have some asbestos found, so that's all been abated. There, that was, but there was contingency for that as well, so that was well within the, well within the budget for abatement.
Where, where was the asbestos, was it in, um, like, um, piping, or?
Yeah, yeah, a lot of the elbows, pipe elbows, they tended to use asbestos based, uh, insulation.
Yeah.
For sweating, and, um, and then some of the schools, Osborne Hill, for example, um, where the, where the visible wall is to the roof, ceiling top, it's the roof, if you will, it, it was, uh, there was nothing there, it was a, uh, cavity. So when they removed the ceilings, there was a lot of sound issues, so we had to put up temporary and then permanent uh, structures to sort of block that off and put insulation in place, so that was an example of another sort of unexpected construction issue.
So that's between like the tile?
Yeah, for the tile up to the
But you knew what was in there, pretty much, because you can lift the
It was, it was discovered during, yeah, and then the range
Just with that experience on other projects.
You know it's going to be in there basically, every school, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Were there any other surprises, big surprises, I mean, or complications in going into these buildings?
Um, there, I think there was, there were some headaches with coordination with UI, there's been some, um, I think that's probably been the biggest conversation point is electrical work. But generally speaking, it's gone very smoothly, uh, there hasn't been a lot of gnashing of teeth or surprises in that regard.
From, from the electrical work that you need, uh, upgrades, or wha- what, what kind of, what are you depending on them for again?
Yeah, so they, they, they have to bring in the electricity from, uh, to the pole. So there's upgrades from even at the street level, capacity, more, more, yeah. Um, and then the, um, there, there has to be additional wiring run from the poles to the, uh, to the schools, to the transformers, so all of that that digging and duck work and pulling of the wires in for the additional electricity and then tying it into the, uh, to the building itself.
Did, did you have any, um, areas where there, there wasn't room to run the ducts and you had to do like some sort of, like, most of, most of the buildings would have room between the ceiling and the upper ceiling.
Oh, 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 in the hallways and stuff, the, the duck work is, um, uh, I was in Osborne Hill the other night, it, it is not the shapes that you would normally think of for duck work, it's been, there's a lot more engineering that had to be done. Um, for example, it's, yes, much flatter, but much wider.
That need a different type of different type of
It just has to be, it has to be engineered to make sure you get the proper airflow through.
Instead of a one by two, one foot by two foot duct, you're going into a, a flatter duct.
Right.
But it's, it's all within the parameters.
And you know that probably before you even started, like, you're not discovering it.
It is a, well, it is a coordination between the, uh, mechanical contractor and the ceiling contractor and the engineers to figure out where the existing equipment is in it. Prior to the, prior to the design or prior to the bid, not everything above the ceiling is detailed, so once the ceilings are opened, there is a coordination, um, effort between all the trades to get, get the duck work. Duck work's the biggest, so it takes priority to get the duck work in, and then work the sprinkler and the electrical around that.
All the duck work is custom made.
All custom made, okay, I didn't know that.
So it's, it's not, yeah, you're not, it's not, you're not going to Home Depot and buying some piece of duck work and sticking it up there, no, it's all
Putting it on the, on this side of the
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's all hidden.
Yeah, it's all hidden, it's, it's, um, yeah, so that, that work is, so to Mark's point, it's, once they remove the ceilings, they do all of the, the laser measurements to figure out exactly what's going to fit and what's in the way. Uh, and that, that, not surprises, but that's some of the work too, right? You can't run it because there's a, something that has to get moved. So you have to move some wires, or you have to move a sprinkler head temporarily, whatever, to get the duck work through, so.
What, what was the long lead time equipment you were talking about?
The glass, they said, just
Right, yeah, yeah.
The glass is the only piece of long lead left. There was some electrical equipment that we were monitoring closely, there were some concerns about that, that was some long lead stuff, but that's all that's all come in, and we're in a good place with that, so the last, the last bit of long lead is the glass, and
It was, were from, they were from, that side, weren't they?
Well, I mean, I know just from some past projects, and we've had some air conditioning units that were coming from, or insulation or switches, something was for
There was some, there were some, yeah, there were some delays, there were some changing of, uh, vendors and such because of, um, supply chain issues, for sure.
I mean, it is, and it, but it also, you know, potentially, as we're looking at other projects escalate across just for the length of the project going on, so a lot of uncertainty right now, hopefully that won't be an issue, but something just to keep, you know, back, yeah, keep in mind.
So I did, so there, the, um, we did stop the construction in August to allow a positive moving experience for the, the schools, so there was a little bit of a pause there. Um, everything, all the feedback's been very positive, the principals have been supportive. They're spoken to frequently, and there's been no issues, so everybody's, uh, everybody seems content, we haven't had any, um, we haven't had any parents complaining, the only parent I've ever had call is, was been about Dwight, not about these projects, so I'm sure she spoke to you guys as well.
Oh, she's sitting right there?
But that was, so that was, it's been no, no parental issues from any issue, anybody, so it's been going really well in that regard.
Well, about Dwight, you haven't looked at Dwight.
Tomlinson's been, I'll use as a segue, so Tomlinson was added to our preview. So just the, the scope of Tomlinson, the, again, the, the Special Building Committee has the roof. We have the HVAC portion of that, so we, I am stressing coordination with that Special Building Committee to ensure that we're not as I've been phrasing it, I don't want to cut a hole in a perfectly good roof. We should be doing that work ahead of time, so we'll coordinate to put the duck work in the roof as it's replaced and not have
That's the reason we moved up Tomlinson.
The roof.
Or, or we moved up the roof?
Yeah.
One of them, we, we coordinated, yeah.
You moved up the roof to, the roof has to be done before the HVAC's put on, otherwise you'd have to remove all the HVAC and put the new roof.
Okay.
So that, that, that makes perfect sense from an orderly perspective. So twenty twenty five, just from a, just from a timing perspective, that'll be final design, we could bids, planning. We'll be getting the preliminary work all in this calendar year, and then the construction would be in the summer of twenty twenty six. Um, I put some bullets here with some of the, some of the major milestones, so we have the what's considered the ninety percent construction documents are due, that'll be the middle of March, mid-March, construction design. That CD estimate will be early April of twenty twenty five. The committee approves to go to bid mid-April, twenty twenty five. Uh, the BOE will approve the bids to go to bid the bid approval to go to bid in late April, uh, four twenty two, I put a specific date there, because that's what the BOE's calendar is right now, so as of right now, it's April twenty second, would be that, target that meeting. And then the committee in the Board of Education approval for the guaranteed max price for the GMP is late June.
We'll be back in front of you guys, late June, probably early, late June, early July, for, uh, approval of the GMP.
And then once the GMP's in place, we can move forward. And the size of Tomlinson, by the way, I didn't put it on the slide, but it's, it's, um, about, from the HVAC perspective, it's about five point six million.
I just think, um, for the, for the public setification, because there's not a PowerPoint up or anything for them to see it. The figures, you know, sixteen point seven, eighteen point five, ten point four. So we're, you know, forty five million, forty five point six million total for all of this.
For the, the overall cost, yeah, so the, the revised, the revised cost on that, um, yeah. So the sixteen points, so right, the HVAC, I was saying for North Stratfield, sixteen point seven million. The HVAC being eleven point six million of that, four point four for the roof. And the vestibule, seven hundred thousand, Woods was eighteen point five million, with seventeen point seven for HVAC. Seven hundred and seventy for the vestibule and the security, and then Osborne Hill was ten point four million, nine point nine being for HVAC and five ninety eight being for the security vestibule work, so uh, the biggest portion of that being glass, of course.
I just think, because the public can't see this, you know,
Fair enough.
They know that, you know, we're spending forty five million dollars.
Yeah, it is, again, and it's not just, it's the, the upgrade of the equipment in place, new equipment, which is expensive, and then it's the the awkwardness of the work, tearing down the ceilings, running that new duck work. And that's, that's the expense, so it's really not a equivalency of when people think about putting in a new air conditioner in your house kind of thing.
I mean, I think that's just the fire suppression that needs to be done, electric, I mean, it's, it's, you know, you're upgrading um, the infrastructure of the building
Yeah, yeah.
In multiple ways, which I think often gets lost in these conversations, that it's not just well, firstly, it was just we're cooling the school, and now it's the mechanical needs of fresh air, but it's also that you can't just you know, stick an air conditioner in the window, that there needs to be, um, mechanical piece
Yeah.
Needs to be upgraded, so.
It's also a lot of work's being done off, off hours as well, so there's, there's, all of the work is done after school and, uh, into the night, and then there's a cleanup process so that there's, um, uh, no signs that the work was done, is the idea, right? other questions
no
yeah thank you
can you
and Mark as well
can you just give a quick um just on the other high schools with the I know it's on the waterfall but being that we aren't maybe reviewing that tonight just in terms of how the estimates have changed some good and we like good news we've heard about money that's being spent would like just to at least some initial figures about money potentially being saved from initial from some of the initial estimates I don't know if you're comfortable sharing that or
yeah I didn't bring that I didn't I I'm not prepared to speak to that
you want to talk to it next next week for with the
I mean they're here
get you those numbers
okay
yeah that 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 can be read
alright
the numbers that were put in though should have been reflected those were all reflected in the waterfall
I mean you I want to thank yeah Echo uh Mr. Galdenzi thank you for when I asked you to volunteer for this committee little did you know that Mr. Becker would be moving on and no longer so thank you Mr. Becker for your for starting it off um and Mr. Lee and just the work being done on this and just leading it and it's
fun
really
it's a good a very good group that everyone is um the the team works very well together it's been a very good very positive experience so Mr. Becker set me up for success as it were
Mr. Lee third chair but we're glad to have you
these are all
I forgot that you were first before you got on
um to the the change orders um that have come in um what what types of things have you seen they're all based on what what they find
a lot of it a lot of it is existing conditions
yeah
that had as as we open up the um open up the ceilings just the existing conditions in there above the ceiling there that requires change
there's been some specification changes again some of the some of the work um with the United Illuminating had some the old changes that had to be implemented that that were different from the original drawings
have they all come in within I'm sorry Woods is one point oh four five million under budget is that is that right or is that just forecasted
it's forecast yeah it's not it's not complete yet so I don't yeah don't you can't take my money yet
okay okay but all of them so far look like they're coming in on
yes yes I am highly I'm highly
honorary member
I'm highly confident that we will not come back and say that we are now over budget I that would be I can't I can't even fathom that as a scenario
okay but Osborne Hill is anticipated to be that's the only one that's slightly is is somewhat over overrun to it or
it's still it's still under budget
it's under budget okay there we go yeah okay all right cool
it's under seven hundred
really did well
so with the continue again the contingency you're looking at about what is I don't know the total is two two point two point eight million under right now if we if we closed everything today
yeah thank you so much
you haven't heard any complaints that's a I mean pretty amazing so congratulations
there's a lot of inspections that are done the building the building inspectors are going in um there there's inspectors on site at you to the schools that are going through so there's there's a lot of people checking in to make sure the uh the dust and everything is is what's controlled most of that again the demos are all complete so there shouldn't be it should just be all up uphill from here if you will um a lot from a aesthetics perspective so and then the uh there'll be some dust I suspect from ceiling tile installation but that shouldn't be a a crazy amount
finally we were trying to talk about this at RTM at the capital planning meeting and getting laughed out of the room yeah okay
I wasn't at that table I was in the audience and one of the things that prompted me to actually run before bed many years ago
okay
thanks thanks a lot Jeff thanks for your dedication
everyone
thank you okay um we're skipping thirteen uh item number fourteen refunds to consider and act upon tax refunds is recommended by the tax collector in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and forty two dollars and forty two cents uh may have a motion um any discussion on this item
no
um any from the public seeing no public David do you have any
I I'm sorry are you asking for public comment
no on on tax refund so um uh any no comments on tax item number fourteen um back to the board all in favor say aye
aye
um item number fifteen um I am going to push this off to the next meeting for Brenda's back purposes
yep
um uh I'm I'm I'll make a motion to push this off to the next meeting second
second
all in favor say aye
aye
aye okay item number sixteen I'm going to not make any announcements
can I just ask um uh because we have the capital projects group and I know we had discussions about this um in the past um and we got to see some of the one of the new members I think just for the uh board bill if can I request that you provide the board with the following um in the interest of providing sort of a full picture to the public a detailed check history report from July first twenty twenty four uh to now for every individual in the new development group um including Eli so that we can have it and the the public could also have it
a report on um the individuals who are in that group
yeah the check the check history from July twenty four July first twenty four till today
check history meaning payroll or wait what
correct like who's getting paid what when did they start getting paid what was the code that sort of thing
um I think so I don't know there you should I mean sure
thank you
all right any other huh
so capital whatever day you can cap
yeah that's not that's just the separate uh information request um item number seventeen motion to adjourn
second
all in favor say aye
aye
we're adjourned